Board meeting in June 2021 for the Metro National Public Schools Board of Education. We are so excited to have you here. I know we have a number of members of the community on our public participation list, so we're excited to hear from you all and then excited to hear from Dr. Battle and her staff. Before we begin, we've established a quorum. We have just a few missing, but I'm sure they'll be trickling in. We're going to begin with the pledge of allegiance. It's budget season, Mr. Henson. Because you have all the good juju, would you mind leading us in the pledge?
He was ducking down.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right, so members of the public, you will be allowed to speak with us for three minutes. You will hear a bell when your time is over, and you can see it posted both here and, yep, just there. So with that being said, we will begin with Ms. Regina Helm Smith. All right, Ms. Dorothy Stevens. All right, Melissa, I'm sorry, say it one more time, I'm so sorry. Amron, thank you.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Battle, I'm Melissa Amron. My address is 409 Shackelford Court, and I wanted to let you know that I really appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. I've never done this before. I'm looking forward to it. As we return to a sense of normal, requiring progressively less masking and fewer overall precautions, I hope that you will be mindful that masking children based upon vaccination status is a form of segregation and is a violation of basic human rights. I'm a healthcare professional with over 20 years of experience in Tennessee, and I can tell you that today in our healthcare system, some places masks are being used as a means of punishment for those who decline the flu vaccine. Personal reasons are irrelevant, whether they're religious or medical exemptions or other reasons. Your actual healthiness doesn't matter whether you had the flu last year, whether you have the flu every year, or whether you've never had the flu in your life. If you don't take the drug, you get the mask. Masks are used in a punitive way. This is medical discrimination, and I don't want to see it happen to our children. In Davidson County, we pride ourselves on diversity. We have many differences in race, religion, political affiliations, and socioeconomic status. That diversity is a blessing, and it does require that we uphold the principles of inclusion and equality. It requires diversity of thought. We cannot force mask, quarantine, or contact trace one group and not another, any more than we can relegate one group to the back of the bus. The only important metric is who is sick and who is healthy. Healthy children belong in school. In the absence of an emergency, they belong in school unmasked. Please remember as we move forward that we, the people of Davidson County, had elected you guys. We elected you to represent us. We did not elect the CDC or the Department of Health. You are in charge of education, not healthcare, and so I implore you to leave the medical decisions to the parents in cooperation with our chosen healthcare providers. March through May of 2020 was an unusual time. We are in a different place now with multiple vaccines, many people with natural immunity, and masks available to those who choose them. It is time to return to parent choice. Medical decisions should be made within families, seeking healthcare professionals who guide us, but allow us to choose what is best for our kids, weighing the risk benefit reward for every decision based on our personal medical histories and our values without coercion. In closing, I'd like to bring to your attention that legislation was recently passed just days ago, signed into law by Bill Lee, and I'm going to quote from that legislation, which prohibits state and local authorities from forcing, requiring, or coercing a person to receive an immunization or a vaccination for COVID-19. I thank you for your time, and I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Sarah Seigand? Seigand, sorry about that.
Hello, my name is Sarah Seigand, and I am the parent of two MNPS high schoolers. I'm here today urging you to drop the mask mandates for our students, both in summer school and for the fall. I am one of hundreds of parents who advocated for our schools to reopen because the science supported safely doing so. We were willing to accept mask mandates at that time because we knew we had to do whatever it took to return our students in person. Our kids were in crisis, so urgency was key. Since then, however, we've vaccinated 48% of our city, and 13% of our city already have natural immunity after recovering from COVID. We are reaching herd immunity quickly. Transmission and hospitalization rates have fallen sharply. After months of in-person learning, we now have data to evaluate how it went. However, this data has not been presented in a way that provides context or is visually understandable. And I brought a little visual aid of a couple of districts that are doing this really well. One from Manatonka, which is outside of Minneapolis, and one from Wichita. As you can see, numbers and trends are displayed very clearly. There is a timeline of students and staff infection rates, and they can see where the data is trending. Why can't Nashville provide this kind of data? We can, and we should, and I will email you all copies of this so you can see an example. And I am a graphic designer and do these sort of things for a living, so I know it's very easy to do. When I emailed Mrs. Elrod about the need for masks, her answer referred me to the CDC recommendation that unvaccinated people continue to mask, and she also made a comment which I would like entered into the record. She said, "Most of our student population will not be vaccinated as vaccinations will not be available to them when school starts. Therefore, I anticipate that masks will still be required until all populations can be protected," end quote. I would like to note that every district in America has those two same criteria. They have the CDC recommendations to evaluate, and they have students that are not old enough to receive vaccinations. However, district after district is going mask optional because they have tracked data that proved that their transmission rates were already incredibly low to begin with and further dropped with population immunity. So I challenge you to submit our district's data to an independent external process of analysis so that your policies about masks can be data-driven. Masks are not the most pressing issue for our students. We all know that. That's why we want to take it off the table and let our teachers teach without hindrance and without having to be the police of their classroom. Thank you.
Thank you. Asha Carr?
Asha, thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Asha Carr. My address is 2305 Crescent Valley Place, Hermitage. My son is four years old and attends Stanford Montessori School. I wanted to share your story, my story that happened with him. My son's doctor written a medical exemption for him in 2020 September. I submitted this before the return from virtual school. We were told MNPS gave no accommodations, no exemptions, only accommodations. We attempted to wear the shield, but he was uncomfortable, hot, and was having trouble seeing. MNPS nursing team and staff felt they could override what his doctor said, and therefore was no longer in compliance with what his doctor's recommendations were. Recently, on Friday, May 14th, Nashville revised their decision to no longer continue indoor mask mandates, and I received an email at work from the Metro Health Department that they would no longer require employees to wear masks indoors. The following Monday, May 17th, my husband and I re-attempted to send our son to school without a face covering. We were met at the door by his principal that physically blocked him from entering the school and shut the door in his face and proceeded to reiterate he was not allowed to enter without a face covering. After the local city mandates were lifted, there is no reason our children should be required to wear a mask. I am aware businesses are able to make their own requirements regarding masks, but Metro Nashville Public Schools is not a business. My child is not a business. The teachers that work there are civil servants, just like myself. MNPS should not be attempting to put themselves in the same category as a business by maintaining that they have the right to require face coverings as payment into their schools. Medically fragile children who need the most help this year were told to stay home if you can't wear a face covering. These children deserve better. My husband and I were told this year's MNPS accommodations for medical exemptions were to stay virtual, wear a mask, face shield, sorry, face shield, or isolate your child in school. At what point did it become okay to isolate children? What is the plan for next year? Next year's virtual school is no longer an option. These medically fragile children that couldn't wear something last year are not going to be able to this fall. Are we going to isolate them? On the same note, you may say these medically fragile children are the ones that need the protection. However, where are these children going in the city that everybody is wearing masks at all times? Nowhere. At this point, it's a choice if someone wears a mask or not. These parents, that's what they're asking for, a choice. Adults have had that choice now for several months to get a vaccine. Children as young as 12 can go the same day and get an appointment. At this point, who are the masks protecting? We were told the masks were to protect grandparents, immunocompromised people that children may take the illness home to. But that category of people, plus the majority of the population, can get the vaccine to protect themselves if they want it. And so the children should no longer be able to carry that responsibility. They should have never had to, but certainly not now or in the fall. They should never be required to wear a mask again to gain entry into your school building. Thank you so much for hearing my son's story.
Thank you. Charlie Friedman?
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Charlie Friedman. I live at 1805 Woodland Street, and I am the founder of Nashville Classical Charter School. About six weeks ago, the board voted to deny our proposal to open a second campus on Charlotte Pike, and we're grateful for your feedback and obviously respect that decision. We proposed a second school because we believe that the past year has exposed inequities that are as old as our country, and we know that these injustices play out every day in our city and our schools. Humbly, we believe that high-quality, integrated, open enrollment schools are more important to Nashville than ever, and I'm grateful to have the chance to speak to you directly about why we have been and can continue to be an effective partner to the district. In the summer of 2012, MNPS unanimously approved Nashville Classical. We are an independent, homegrown, public charter school, which is a polite way of saying that we started from nothing. When we first opened, I met personally face-to-face with families across the city and asked them to enroll in our school. We met in libraries and churches, in the basements of community centers, and at crowded kitchen tables. There was no building we could show them, no teachers they could meet, but together, we built a community out of our promises and their dreams. And that community looks a lot like MNPS. 73% of our scholars are Black or Hispanic. 12% have disabilities. 60% live in poverty. Our students come from 26 unique zip codes, and we have bus stops from Antioch to Madison. More than 2/3 of our students live outside of East Nashville, and our most popular bus stop is in the James Casey Homes. So while our school may look ordinary, our results are anything but. On the TAN Ready, our students score in the state's top 10%. Our subgroups are particularly successful. Black, Hispanic, economically disadvantaged, and IEP students are two times more likely to achieve proficiency than their peers across the state. So this year, as we approached full growth, we reflected on where to go, and we set our sights on finding a way to serve more children, because every February, hundreds of families apply to our school, and they never get to attend. Among the 157 public schools in Nashville, we have received the most applications among any elementary school. The only schools with more applications are academic magnet or magnet pathway schools, schools like MEGs, Hume-Fogg, and MLK. However, unlike these schools, we have zero academic requirements for entry. We offer open enrollment to families from any neighborhood in the city, and we provide free transportation. So we decided to propose a second campus. And as we looked at census data, school performance, enrollment projections, and talked to the community, we believed it could be powerful to put Nashville Classical Long Charlotte Pike at the nexus of multiple neighborhoods and footsteps from the interstate. As Nashville changes, grows, and works to overcome generational obstacles, redlining, and segregated schools, we believe that accessible, open enrollment schools are critical to a more equitable future, and humbly, we'd like to partner with you to build that future for our families and our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicole Oregi? All right, Elizabeth Hines?
Not Elizabeth Hines. Kevin Walker here was taking her spot tonight. Just speaking on behalf of the PAC. I live in Donaldson, Cloverwood Drive. I've had kids at Hickman Elementary, Donaldson Middle, McGavick High School, MEGs, and Hume-Fogg. So longtime MNPS parent, glad to be here tonight. Just wanted to give you a quick update on some stuff going on with our Parent Advisory Committee. We have our first district PAC meeting scheduled for August 31st. We have been recruiting and finding additional PAC members in our schools, and some of the topics that we are looking at having in the fall discussing as a PAC and in communication with MNPS would be retaining parents in our schools, school safety, nutrition, et cetera. I would emphasize, though, that at the district cluster level, we still need leadership. So if you have Antioch, Whites Creek, Hunters Lane, Stratford, Maplewood, Kainridge, or Hillwood in your district, please, we need PAC leaders or cluster leaders for those clusters. Feel free to reach out to myself, reach out to BB Hines, either one of us. We would be glad to come speak to schools, to community meetings you have, anything we can do to get the word out about the Parent Advisory Committee. My email address is mnpspac@vicechair or mnpspacvicechair@gmail.com. So two invitations tonight. One, to the school board members, you guys have been very gracious as we've gotten, we're starting to use an old lean principle that says you have to go slow in order to go fast. We're building infrastructure and building processes and procedures in place so that we can achieve the goal of being a conduit and a vessel to communicate with MNPS and then them be able to communicate with parents. So my first invitation is to board members, reach out to us. Let us know how we can help you, particularly in those areas where we don't. Second invitation, to all the parents that are gathered here tonight, I applaud you and your desire to come and speak out on behalf of your kids. I would invite your participation as well in the Parent Advisory Committee. If you don't know who your leaders are, if you don't know who your leaders are in your schools, in your district, let me know. I'll be glad to help you out any way I can. The PAC is a great way to get involved, to provide more than just three minutes once a month, but an ongoing conversation so that we can build an educational system that benefits every child in Metro. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie Bowman?
Good evening, board members. My name is Stephanie Bowman, and I live at 11 Fox Hall Close, Nashville, Tennessee 37215. I have two children in Metro schools, one that just barely scraped through the eighth grade at JT Moore and a freshman in high school at Hillsborough. I myself am a product of Nashville Public Schools as a graduate of Hillsborough High School, a proud graduate. I'm here today to talk about optional mask wearing immediately and certainly into the fall for the coming year. Former speakers have given a lot of data and facts, and I implore this leadership group that has been voted by the members of Davidson County to consider the data and science as you make protocol decisions for the coming year. One of the things that I have seen personally in my own children is the psychological effects that not only has this horrific pandemic had on them and everyone around us, but to top it off with having to force them to wear a mask day in and day out, and the ramifications that come from that from a medical perspective afterwards. I know that our administrators, and you all, and our teachers have worked extremely hard, and I have many friends that actually worked in MNPS, and they have their own feelings as well, wanting to be liberated, wanting to be able to teach, wanting to be able to psychologically counsel these kids in a manner that's appropriate. You've spent a lot of time and energy this past year on social emotional learning. I think we need to dig a little bit deeper in the year to come, and I implore you to please consider optional mask only for the next school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Diana Aguilar?
Good afternoon. My name is Diana Aguilar, and as a parent, I would like to take a moment to thank Dr. Battle and every member of the board for making the decisions necessary to support every MNPS student, family, and staff member throughout these difficult times. I have had the honor to serve MNPS for the past 10 years as a parent, a retranslator, EL kindergarten teacher at Yuna, and third grade teacher at Lindell. I am here today to express my support for the authorization of Aventura Community School. As an educator and a mother of two young children, I was thrilled when I first heard about Aventura's intentionally diverse dual-language model. In the classroom, I have witnessed how kids can learn so much from each other when they are provided an environment that fosters diversity and inclusion. I strongly believe that Aventura can be the place where students will be able to bring their background languages and cultures to enrich their lives and the lives of those around them. The combination of bilingual education, purposeful academics, and global competence make Aventura unique. However, its commitment to being a resource for students and their families is what makes it stand out, in particular with our immigrant community. Several local organizations such as the Tennessee Immigrant and Refugee Rights Coalition, Conexión Americas, and the Hispanic Family Foundation, among others, have expressed their interest and enthusiasm for this creation. As an immigrant myself, and as someone who has worked with immigrant families through the years, I have a greater appreciation for the type of support that these organizations can provide in a time of need. I can already envision Aventura being that bridge that connects families with our amazing community partners. A bilingual school like Aventura is overdue in Nashville, not only because of the city's growing and changing population, but also because it constitutes best practice in education. MNPS serves a large number of EL students, and an immersion program like Aventura will benefit them significantly. Being able to capitalize on the student's prior knowledge is invaluable. Imagine how much more confident students will be when they are able to show what they know in their first language. Also picture students with other language backgrounds having the opportunity to become multilingual by learning from their peers. Being bilingual is so rewarding and has opened so many doors for me personally. My hope is that more children in our district can have the option to attend a free bilingual school with such a community focus like Aventura because it is truly life-changing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Alice Nye? Okay, Ben Voss? Mimi Pullman? Judah Seigand? Seigand, sorry about that. Okay.
Hello, my name is Judah Seigand, and I'm an 11th grader at Hume-Fogg. I'd like to make a comment on mask mandates for the upcoming school year. When I was in fourth grade at Granbury Elementary, I learned about the scientific method. The main steps in the scientific method are observation, research, forming a hypothesis, testing the hypothesis, analyzing data, and drawing conclusions. From those early days, we were taught to think critically about our world. From my point of view and that of my high school friends, it seems you have made an observation and a hypothesis about masks, but skipped the step of analyzing the data to see if your hypothesis was correct before drawing conclusions. Where is the data you are basing your conclusions on about the success of and the need for masks in schools? Where are the charts showing infection rates of in-person Metro students over time? You see, the burden of proof falls on you to prove that masks significantly reduce transmission in our schools. It's only a vote to you, but it affects me and thousands of other students every single day for seven, eight hours. By the way, have you even seen the kind of masks everyone wears to school? And even elementary, I'm thinking of elementary kids who their face gets hot and they can't keep it on because they just don't know. They're not really, you know, old enough to understand the effects. Even Dr. Fauci himself said in an email that was recently released, "The typical mask bought in a drugstore is not really effective in keeping out the virus, which is small enough to pass through the material." In addition, the vast majority of my classmates and teachers are already vaccinated. Our community transmission rates are at their lowest point since April 1st, 2020, and continue to drop. The CDC recently said that fully vaccinated people are free to resume pre-pandemic activities without a mask or social distancing. Dr. Monica Gandhi, an infectious disease specialist, wrote in the Washington Post last week, "The science tells us that on our current trajectory, it's possible to get all children back to school in person by the fall, free of masks, free of regular testing, social distancing, or fear." Children who are not yet vaccinated have two very strong dynamics working in their favor. First, as is well known, children are at extremely low risk of serious illness from COVID compared to adults. Secondly, as case rates fall even lower, children not yet eligible for vaccination will be protected as more in the community become immune. With fewer people infected, the likelihood of any unvaccinated people being exposed to the virus will become vanishingly small. I'll end by saying that in less than a year, I will turn 18, and I will be able to vote. Me and my friends will remember how you have handled these decisions. Before all of this, we didn't realize how political our school board was and how few adults were standing up for us and listening to us. Now we do, and we will vote accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. Ben Voss?
All right. Good evening, everybody. My name is Ben Voss. I live at 7101 Preston Run, Goodwoodsville, Tennessee. Wanted to begin by thanking each of you for your service to our community. We are aware that your work is a labor of love, and especially during this time, and thank you for dealing with all of the varying opinions in our city. We all want our kids to be successful, but what are we aiming at? We're preparing kids for a future that's uncertain, and they're going to help shape that future. So one definition of success that I found helpful comes from the late UCLA basketball coach, John Wooden. He taught his players something that he talked about called the pyramid of success, a set of building blocks to achieve competitive greatness. Coach Wooden said, "Success is the peace of mind that comes as a direct result of self-satisfaction and knowing that you made the effort to become the best of which you are capable. It's not measured by external results. It's measured by developing the character, skills, grit, perseverance, and initiative to face challenges with a sense of teamwork, friendship, and enthusiasm." I'm grateful to be working here in Nashville with a number of world-class teammates. That includes the talented 10th Leadership Development Team, a group of financial professionals focused on building wealth by working with families often ignored or even exploited by the traditional financial services industry. This group is dedicated to a no-family-left-behind mission, and the team in Nashville includes a number of folks who have been classroom teachers in Metro schools. We've also begun collaboration with the Financial Empowerment Center here in Nashville, and we provide no-cost financial reviews to families as part of our work. One of my personal goals is to provide a financial roadmap to 100 families every month as we help families plan for college and career training. We need to show people, young people especially, that their career aspirations are achievable and won't leave them overwhelmed with high student debt. We have to face the brutal facts and count the cost, but without ever losing hope that we can prevail in the end. I also had an opportunity over the past year to serve as the Partnership Council Chair for the Freshman Academy in Metro Schools and work closely with a number of business partners, as well as the founding partners of the academies in Nashville. I can say that while many business partners have been trying to find ways to continue their work, we've also seen a major shift to remote workplaces, and it's been much harder as a result of that to rally community support and get business partners engaged in our classrooms. There are some bright spots. I'm particularly excited about a collaboration that's emerged with Brian Lowenthal. Brian worked as a change management consultant here in Nashville, but worked with companies all around the world, specializes in leadership development, and he's hoping to bring his talents into more schools here in Nashville. His Improving the Odds Initiative is focused on developing the character and skills that will prepare young people to become thriving citizens of the world, and he's actually using the John Wooden Pyramid of Success to inspire a new generation of young people. There are so many people here in our community who are willing and ready to help, and I'm hopeful that we can bounce back from the challenges of the past year to reach even more Nashville families. Thank you.
Thank you. My apologies for the confusion. Next, Todd Bowman?
Good evening, Metro Board and Metro Chair. My name is Todd Bowman. I'm a parent of two children that go to Metro schools. My wife spoke a moment ago to Stephanie. We both live at 11 Fox Hall Close. Thank you for having me in today. I want to thank Judah. That was an awesome talk. Did a great job, so. I will also be voicing my opinion, not just here, but at the polls when time comes as well. Last year was very taxing for everyone. No one saw it coming. No one had a plan going into this, and that's one of my biggest frustrations, was having to wait and hear, wait and see, and there was no plan. While my children have friends that go to various different schools, public and private, they seem to have some sort of plan coming out of the fall, springs of last year. So I have two requests. One, have a plan and execute that plan, but more importantly, communicate it to the parents. Don't make us sit around and wait again. It was ridiculous. And then, secondly, none more of the masks. We can look around. Half the room has them on, half the room doesn't. This city is jam-packed every weekend, full of people. And I have to explain to my children, when we drive by places, well, they can, but we can't, or vice versa. It's no different than segregation of any kind. So enough's enough. Make a plan. Don't wait on the CDC. Don't wait on the government. Get together as a council, put a plan together, communicate that plan, and execute on behalf of everyone in this room, all the children that are going to Metro schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Lauren Herring?
Good evening. Thank you, Board, for hearing us today. My name is Lauren Herring. I live at 6056 Frontier Lane. I have students at Granbury Elementary and Oliver Middle Schools. I am very thankful this tumultuous year is over, and I'm very eager to know what the COVID plans look like going forward. I'm not a scientist, nor do I care to copy and paste other researchers' findings on masking childrens in schools, but as a parent, a former educator, actually taught Mr. Henson's son in high school, and as a current substitute teacher with MNPS, I want to share son in high school, and as a current substitute teacher with MNPS, I want to share some of my own experiences this past year. First, if you were able to spend any time at all inside a school building this year, which was difficult, you saw problems with mask-wearing. In my experience as a substitute at two different elementary schools, I witnessed very few students wearing them correctly. I saw so many noses out, masks on chins, masks constantly pulled down to talk to other students and/or the teacher, and so many wet masks. I do not doubt that masks were effective when worn correctly, but there is no way the majority of students that interacted with me were protected or were offering any protection based on how they wore their masks. Masking is an unnecessary burden for students. Secondly, I know parents who kept their students at home this year because of sensory issues when it came to wearing a mask all day. My son, who had no prior sensory issues, began to chew through his masks. As the year progressed, he chewed holes in every one of his cloth masks, to the point that they were unusable. Since he ruined all of his washable masks, I started sending him in the disposable ones. He continued to chew through those, often going through two or three a day at school. Wearing a mask all day, every day created a problem for him that he did not have before. And now that he does not have to wear a mask, he chews on his shirt all day long. I know several family friends whose children have developed similar sensory problems after this year of masks at school. What will happen to students with sensory issues if masks are mandatory again next year? But perhaps the greatest challenge masking created was for our English learner population. I spent most of my time subbing in an EL class at Granbury. It was incredibly difficult for us to communicate with each other when, when all of us wore masks. As we've all realized over the past year, we read lips so often. Children learning English need to be able to see full faces of their teachers and peers if they have any hope of learning to communicate in English. I would also extend this to any child who is receiving phonics instruction. How much further behind will students fall who need to see and be seen? In conclusion, experience coupled with science shows that masks should be optional for students going forward. I hope that you will consider this when making decisions for the upcoming school year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jim Claxton. I live at 1236 McGrace Lane. I have two children. Will be at JT Moore next year. I also work for the district. I serve as an occupational therapist. I work in the Overton and the Hillsborough Cluster. I don't have any data, other than my observations, and I just would ask the Board to consider the burden on the staff and the students to wear a mask. I work with all populations, typical, neuro-atypical. It is very, very hard for children to wear a mask appropriately all day. As an adult who is responsible for these children, constant reminders, constant masks, masks on the ground, masks in the desks. In theory, I see where a mask might be needed in certain situations. I even had students who couldn't wear a mask for medical reasons. They just couldn't, they just didn't have the ability to wear it all day. I think there's a, there's a low load of emotional stress wearing a mask all day, as someone who's done it. Also, I'm not a fan of team meetings. Spending two to three hours a day on a Teams meeting, there is a load there for the adults participating, especially if you have a translator. It is very difficult to communicate what we need to communicate to parents through an interpreter, through Teams. Not a fan of Teams. Would love for the district to consider Zoom if we're going to continue on this virtual meeting pathway, just as an end user. I'm thankful for what all you do. It is not easy. I'm advocating for my students and my children. It has been very difficult for my nine-year-old, who's missed half a third grade, half a fourth grade, who will now be going to middle school, is a 10-year-old. She turns 10 next year, or, excuse me, next month. I have serious reservations that she will not be ready for middle school. But I'm committed for my children to being around all kinds of kids, good kids, bad kids, every, every kind of kid that's available in metro. And I thank you for your time. Take care.
Thank you. Kristi Mayo?
Hello, my name is Billy Savage Short, and I live at 2880 Creek Bend Drive, Nashville, Tennessee, 37207. I'm here today to talk about the concerns of critical race theory being taught in our schools. This is damaging to children, and I do know that the governor did ban it to be taught in the schools. However, there are ways around that. It depends on your curriculum. For instance, Williamson County, they are using wit and wisdom. You can go ahead and slide in critical race theory if you want to with that curriculum. However, critical race theory is giving children an identity based on color alone. That is very damaging, because no one's identity came from the color of their skin. Their identity came from Christ and Christ alone. This should not be taught in our school system. I have white friends, and they are not oppressive. They are not superior according to critical race theory. I am black, as we all see. I am not a victim of the color of my skin. So please be considerate, please be thoughtful when you allow, when there are loopholes and there are curriculums that are taught, because honestly, I don't know the curriculum for Davidson County going forward. Last year, I had to call the teacher and say, "What curriculum are we using?" It's the Florida Virtual Curriculum. Don't know what we're going to be using next year. However, if it is wit and wisdom, parents, pay attention to the curriculums. Okay? But please, once again, we, the people, have elected you guys, and we've elected you because we expect you to give a free and appropriate education. Critical race theory, not appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Nicole Corey. I live at 925 Waterswood Drive, Nashville, Tennessee, 37220. I'm here tonight for two reasons. The first, I wanted to just thank Mrs. Bush for her advocacy to return to in-person school. I saw so many of you post beautiful graduation photos and prom photos, and the happiness and joy in so many of those was palpable. And I honestly do believe, had it not been for Fran's advocacy, that none of those pictures would have taken place in person. So Fran, just on behalf of so many parents and the 55% of people that wanted schools in-person in August, I just wanted to say thank you, and that I hope that you have been thanked appropriately from everyone. I'm also here to talk about masks. Masks, at this point, should be optional. Our local mask mandate has expired. Our county health department does not believe masking is now a requirement to effectively control this virus. I can take my children to gymnastics, to church, to any restaurant, unmasked, but if I choose to send them to school right now, they are forced to mask. As a medical professional, I know there is zero scientific evidence proving that cloth masks on kids reduce COVID-19 transmission or infection. I believe a well-fitted N95 works, but that is not what our kids are wearing. As Lauren mentioned, that thin piece of cloth that they pull down in the classroom to have snack, to eat their lunch, to be able to talk to a friend or their teacher so they can hear each other, is not working. It is not effective to do anything to keep them safe or to keep them out of harm. The studies recently reported on mitigation practices show there is zero correlation between masking students and COVID-19 numbers and transmissions in schools. We have spent millions of our own money on the Mahary contract that has shown us the majority of parents do not want their children asymptomatic tested, and that transmission between the children is extremely low. Several private schools in our county released their mask mandate at the end of the school year. Williamson County schools are in summer session right now and are not requiring masks. I implore you to call around and see how these schools are doing this. How are they performing? And have you ever looked at a kid's mask at the end of a long day? They are gross. They have mucus and dirt, and they are wet. Are you sure that that is not going to make a child sick or not? If we are going to continue to require masks, then we should have a choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine Herring?
Hi, good evening, Chair, members of the Board. My name is Catherine Herring. I live at 600 McFerran Avenue in Nashville, Tennessee. I'm a nurse. I've been a nurse for 14 years, a nurse practitioner for 10 years, and a nursing instructor, but this is the first time I've been in front of people in a long time, so forgive me. Yesterday, I saw that you're potentially voting to require masks in hallways and buses for the summer, and you will start honoring medical and religious mask exemptions as these children were previously not allowed in school. While these are steps in the right direction, I want to advocate for masks to be optional at all times. Not all children are capable of properly wearing masks at school. The steps to put on and take off a mask are, number one, have the child wash their hands. Number two, grab the mask only by the loopholes. Three, do not touch or play with your mask. Four, remove the mask only with the loopholes, fold the mask in half, and set inside a clean napkin. Five, wash your hands again. Are we all doing that when we're masking? No? Okay. These steps are not feasible every time a child transitions in hallways or rides a bus. Is there a sink in every classroom? I have watched all of you on TV at the last board meeting fiddling and playing with your mask. Masks just draw your attention to your face. Metro teachers reported masks get thrown in backpacks, used as napkins, used as purses for crayons, used as a mouth wipe, used as a tissue for snot worn over their eyes. The masks have been swapped by students, thrown up in, and holes chewed through. This is not sanitary. Teachers are not capable of policing all students' mask use. A 2015 study of the University of New South Wales revealed that widespread cloth mask use by nurses increased the risk for respiratory illness. The penetration of masks by particles was almost 97%. Scientists speculated that cloth mask moisture retention reuse and poor filtration explain the increased risk for infection. Through 2020 and 2021, more than double the number of children died from pneumonia alone than COVID. 750 to pneumonia without COVID, 309 COVID. Mask mandates did not slow the spread of COVID. Just look at New York, California, Michigan. It is a tiny airborne virus. Thinking cloth masks can stop this virus going in and out is like a chain-link fence stopping mosquitoes. It's just that small. The only time, apparently Dr. Fauci may have been telling the truth, is in 2020, when he said, "There's no reason to be walking around with a mask. Wearing a mask might make you feel a little bit better. It may even drop, block a droplet, but it's not providing the perfect protection that people think it is." And often, there is unintended consequences. People keep fiddling with their mask. They keep touching their face. Fortunately, the data has shown that children are extremely low risk of COVID. Nearly four million children in this country have tested positive for COVID, and there is a 99.9% recovery rate. Hospitalization remains around 2%. According to the CDC, children are most commonly asymptomatic or have mild symptoms. The use of mask is a risk-management decision for the parents of that child to decide. Parents should be instructed to monitor for the adverse effects, including headaches, respiratory infections, impuntigo, which is rashes on their face, reluctance to go to school, drowsiness, and impaired learning. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you to those who have spoken and those who've listened. We will move on now to governance issues with our consent agenda. Are there amendments to the consent agenda as listed? Ms. Tyler?
I would like to pull 1C33.
Okay, that's the State Board of Education. Any other amendments? All right. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as amended?
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
All right, all in favor, please raise your hand. All right, it is unanimously approved. We'll move on to 1C33, State Board of Education. Ms. Tyler, please make your motion.
Yes, I make a motion that we have some discussion around this. Can I make that as a motion? Nope.
Ms. Roberts?
I think you would make a motion to either approve or deny the contract, and then there would be discussion after a second.
I make a motion to approve the contract.
Okay. All right, we have a first and a second. We'll begin with discussion. Thank you.
Okay. I just, I have some questions about the feasibility of hosting the students from the State Board of Education in our Promising Scholars. And so I just wanted to get a little bit more clarity around some of the financial aspects of it. So one of the questions I had is, now that we have students attending Promising Scholars, we know exactly how many students are there. How much per pupil are we spending? And that's not how much we'll receive from the state, but when you look at everything that is going out from keeping the schools' open air on, all of that, the hiring of teachers and paraprofessionals, bus drivers, food services, having anybody there that we need for the students, once we get all of that out, how much is it per pupil?
Thank you for your question, Ms. Tyler. I'd like to invite our Executive Officer, Kiri Randolph, to the podium to address your
Thanks for the question. It's a little hard to estimate, but my best estimate is around $1,250 a student.
And then, following up on that, based on the legislation the state passed and the amount that they set aside to fund the new law of requiring this, how much is the state going to pay us per pupil to run summer school?
My best estimate, because it's a little complicated, because it's based on who actually attends, and we seek reimbursement based on that, is about $980 per student. $980 per student. And just a point of clarification, only for first through eighth, rising first through eighth graders, and those that are only students under this contract that are eligible.
Okay, okay, that's helpful. So my concern is that there is clearly a discrepancy there between the amount that we're getting paid and the amount that we are paying to host these students, all of our students, our MNPS, all of them. And I would just like to know if the contract addresses where this additional money that we're going to be spending on each of their students is going to come from. So like, would this charter school that the student comes from be responsible for paying the remaining balance? Or will we have to pay out of pocket for the students who are not MNPS students?
It's a good question. That's a slightly different question. So you asked me about our students. They actually have an allocation based on their students. If they meet their threshold of ED percentage in the 50 students here, who they enrolled in our program, then their estimated per pupil is higher, and it's around $1,400 a student.
Okay.
And then, Ms. Roberts, if you would like to address the second part of the question.
The way we have structured the contract is that all of the funding that is allocated to the State Board from the state for summer school will come to us.
And then, it seemed like you said that there were 50 students. Is that what we anticipate?
Yes.
Okay, and they have already started, is that correct?
Yes, Promising Scholars started yesterday.
Okay, and did 50 students from that group show up?
I tried to get that information in time for the board meeting. I don't have it, but we assumed that they did.
Okay. So I guess, oh, kind of following up on that, when we were hiring teachers and staff for our Promising Scholars, and we promised our 13-to-1 ratio, did we end up having to do any scrambling to hire more staff when we added these extra 50 students, or could we absorb them without spending extra?
Ms. Randolph?
We could absorb them without spending extra. When we had 15,000, in the grand scheme, 50 was the minor. Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. I just, I want to say that I, I understand that this is something that has been a long, drawn-out process of negotiation, but I am, I am extremely disappointed that we're not getting it until after the students have started in our summer school program. What would happen to them if we didn't vote to pass this? I mean, does anybody know, for real?
Well, I think we'll address your question in two ways. Ms. Roberts?
Ms. Roberts, please refer to come to the podium. The first thing I think we must acknowledge is the timing of when this legislation was passed. So there was very little time for us as a district to reorganize our summer learning experience for the summer. And then there was a delay in getting all the updates from our charters and from the ASD around what they were going to be doing. But then I'll kick it over to Ms. Roberts, who led the contracting process around all the complexities around creating such a contract and the need for us. We wanted to be very transparent around this particular partnership and providing the Promising Scholars experience this summer to those 50 students.
As a practical matter, if this contract wasn't approved, the students would no longer be attending. Just like if they had not approached us for this contract, they wouldn't be able to attend because of the complexities that Dr. Battle referenced, as well as the infrastructure of the State Board. They just were not in a position to offer this kind of opportunity to their students.
Do we know if they tried?
I do believe that they tried. And they worked with their charter schools to see if they could offer it to their students, and the infrastructure just wasn't available. And Dr. Battle's team had pulled together such a great program. They really wanted to have their students to have the opportunity to attend Promising Scholars for this year.
And I think that's a very appropriate question, because this was a huge lift for us as a district. I think everyone will probably recall, very early on, we were already talking about our summer program. We did have to pause that, get the details of the legislation in order to be in compliance with what the state law now requires of us. But this was a huge undertaking in providing this experience for nearly 15,000 students, and then having to hire the staff, appropriate staff, to make sure that we were prepared and all the training and resources that go along with it. So I think it's a very appropriate question, recognizing that the timing of this legislation and the expectations for execution in June were very challenging.
Thank you for addressing that, too. I guess another, something I want to just kind of add to that is that we're all doing this because we care about students and their education. And to have something, the timing, create a situation where students are already receiving services from us before we have the chance to vote on whether or not we want to provide those services, puts us in a catch-22 that is really difficult. Because without having, I mean, even not even knowing anything about the contract, it already says, if you don't approve this, these kids are going to be pulled out, which is different than never starting. And that is frustrating, and that, and I understand that it's timing. I know that you personally did not have control over that timing, but I can, I would be remiss if I did not address that aspect.
And Dr. Battle, if I may. Ms. Tyler, I appreciate that with the timing of the request and then the receiving information from TDOE on how they were going to do reimbursement. The other position we would have been in is asking the board to approve a contract without any of the material terms defined, at which point I would speculate that it likely would have been deferred till this meeting anyway. It was a function of timing. I certainly appreciate your concern and apologize for it.
Thank you. And then the last thing I want to say about this is that the reason that these schools are under the purview of the State Board is because we looked at their, looked at their applications to become a charter school for MMPS, and we evaluated them, and we found reason to turn them down, not once, but twice. And I know for a fact that a large part of that concern was our financial ability to continue to support extra schools where they are required to get their full funding before we even start looking at how we can support our own students. So for the state to come in and say, I know that you think you can't do this, we're going to open this up anyway. And if they want to force us to have these charter schools in our district, then I think that it is more than fair to ask them to be the ones to oversee it. And if they are not capable of creating, creating whatever it takes to meet the needs of these students, then they should not be overriding our decisions. If they are not capable of educating these kids in the way that we all want these children educated, then they should not be overriding what we know is best for the students in Metro.
Thank you. Mrs. Masters, sorry.
So, just to be clear, we, the state mandated that we do these summer programs, and then the state was unable to provide those same programs to the children that live here in Nashville.
I'll give us an opportunity to clarify. Ms. Roberts, if you want to respond first.
I do think it is easy to lump the state together, but this is the legislature put forth this mandate. The State Board is a different entity. I don't think they will mind me saying that they were frustrated by the mandate as well. So I don't think lumping them together in this instance is fair.
I appreciate that. I think it's worth noting that the State Board of Education was unable to comply with the mandate made by the legislature. One more question. So, you know, charter schools actively recruit within communities, and I certainly have received a lot of materials as a parent. So will we be providing information to these families of these 50 children about their zoned schools and the fact that that is an option for them? They may, and probably will, honestly, from what I've heard, have an amazing experience this summer. And so I think we should certainly take advantage of this opportunity to be sure that they know about their zoned schools and that they can make that switch in August.
Yes, and I'll take a quick second to respond. Our plans all along have been to provide a quality summer learning experience for all of our students. And in this case, if approved, we would expect that to happen for the 50 students who've selected our MMPS zoned schools. We have identified 71 of our zoned schools, of which students are attending Promising Scholars. I fully expect that our students and families will have an enjoyable experience, a quality experience, that will also shed light on the opportunities that our zoned schools do offer to our students and families. So again, we want to be welcoming, encouraging, and supportive to all of our students, and I think it is an opportunity for us to continue to showcase the greatness of all of our schools in MMPS, and particularly the 71 who are serving as Promising Scholar sites.
Thank you.
I don't see anyone else in the queue, so I'll say, oh, sorry. Go ahead, Ms. Player Peters.
I came in your blind spot. I'm going to support this contract, but I do want to acknowledge Ms. Tyler's arguments in that there's validity to them. But I think it goes to a bigger discussion of our relationship, particularly with the state legislature and the Board of Ed, and the Board of Ed being, like Ms. Robert said, being put in a tough situation of enforcing something where a body of legislators did not fully understand the unintended consequences of their legislation from trying to truly educate children and deal with the pandemic and how the, how education was affected by the pandemic. And I've, and I kind of put this in a category of the emergency contract part of, there's unintended consequences, we need to address unintended consequences. Unfortunately, this is part of a bigger discussion about how we engage with the state with the conversation of charters and the fiduciary responsibility. Because I do agree with you, if they're going to have their own board, there's a fiduciary responsibility they have to partake. But given into that, I put this in exception rule, just because at the end of the day, we have children that need to reinforce what they learned from last year to maintain, as you know, Dr. Chang responded, to maintain what they learned over the years to make sure there isn't a regression in that. And so I'm making the exception for that, just because it goes to a bigger conversation that we need to have through our organizational representatives, whether it's class, or cube, or TSBA, or whatever coalition that we are part of, that it's a longer conversation about their true responsibility. Because as we see in the budget, the charter allocation, our allocation, some of the requests that the community has made to that, and that's a bigger, different discussion. But I do understand and feel your validity and agree to part of it. So I'm standing with it, just because I think it's a good, also kind of olive branch, of how do we create some type of partnership in certain areas between charter schools, our district, and when we can work together, we should work together. And then let the conversation that we need to have with the state be at the state level. But I think it's a longer discussion that, as we need to note what's going on and some of the repercussions of that legislation, and when you have noneducators making educational decisions without taking in the full expertise, as sometimes we respect better, I think, here on the district level, of our educational experts. But I think that, just for the sake of the children, just because of the pandemic, it's extraordinary times that we just need to make the exception for this one. I ask my courage to support that, but honoring the validity of your comments.
All right, Mrs. Elrod and then Mrs. Masters.
Thank you. I was, I need, I guess, two points of, one point of clarification, and then I had a question, or wanted to make sure that we had something stated on the advocacy groups that we have with Ms. Masters, our advocacy committee. I think it's a wise choice for us to add this within those discussions that we have at legislatures, you know, to the point of decisions are made, and then you can't even benefit to your own decision. So I'd like for us to have some good talking points about that when session starts again. I think that's wise. For a point of clarification, it's my understanding, and I want to, I don't want to miscategorize these facts, that a student on average costs $1,250, and that the state will pay us, it seems to be a sliding scale based upon a classification of student of 980 to 1,400. Is that correct?
The state's payment is based on students that attend, the number of economically disadvantaged students that attend, and the allocation. So that's why the numbers are different.
Okay, so we cannot say that we will be paid the full amount that that student will cost. We hope that they will be, but we can't guarantee it.
Right, the actual allocation comes at the end. The cost, Dr. Randolph, was 1,200 per student for MMPS. It is at least possible that the allocation that the State Board gets will be higher per pupil than what it cost us.
Possible, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, so I was, I think I was next.
I'd say you're next, Ms. Masters.
I just, I just want to sort of drive home this point, that it's all well and good to say it's about the children, and we have to serve all of the children, but we aren't really being given a choice. I mean, the children in this case are sort of being used as pawns to force us to step in and offer this service to these specific children. And I think we can care deeply about every child that lives in Nashville and still feel that this request is very inappropriate under the circumstances. So I will just have to say, while I care about every child, I am very torn about this. I know that wasn't a question, it's a statement, but I just wanted to say that.
I don't, I know you were just making a statement. I know in conversations with the State Board, part of that has been really being clear about what it would take in order for us to be able to serve these students during our Promising Scholars summer experience.
Okay.
Vice, can I ask one more question? I guess my last question would be more of a kind of following the law to the letter kind of thing. Let's say that the board decides to vote against the contract. Is there another way that those students could still attend our summer school if they, for example, unenroll from their charter school and enroll in a Metro school? Can we serve them?
The enrollment for Promising Scholars has closed at this point, so I don't know that there would be a mechanism to force the student to resign from the charter school and then re-enroll in MMPS for purposes of attending Promising Scholars.
I'm just trying to find every way we can to meet the needs for these kids, because somebody's got to meet the needs for these kids. And like Ms. Masters, I am extremely torn on this. I feel like I don't want to do anything that could negatively affect any child, whether they are an MMPS student, a charter school student, a private school student, it doesn't matter. Our children should be what we look at first. And for the State Board to have gotten in the situation, and I understand these are exceptional circumstances, but for them to have gotten in a space where they are unable to provide the support that these students desperately need is troubling to me for them. And also, just, it makes me wary about their ability to continue to support anything else that they decide to override for us. It makes me worried about who's going to end up picking up these children and taking care of them at the end of the day. Because right now, it looks like it's going to be us. So I'm very torn.
All right, we have Dr. Gentry and then Mr. Little.
Question, I'm going to ask a question of Dr. Battle. Dr. Battle, do we provide exceptional education services to private school students?
Are you specific to Promising Scholars?
No, I said to private school students. Do we provide exceptional education services and supports to private school students?
No.
Not ever?
Not direct services to private school students. Ms. Roberts?
Depending on sort of some of the circumstances, we may have an obligation to provide some related services to students that attend private schools under the IDEA.
Okay, so, excuse my vernacular. My bigger point being, are there services that are allowed, that we provide to our students that are sometimes made available to private school students?
Yes.
Okay, so we don't expect them to unenroll from private school to take advantage of those services. So I truly understand the concerns. I just wish that we could separate the two things. I believe, as Ms. Player Peters has tried to get us there. And so the students are here, the students are public school students in Davidson County, whether the request came to us, because if the statement that I heard was, I wish there was a way we could provide what these students needed, this is the way. This contract right here is the way for us to provide the supports the students need during the summer. Do we like the way it came about? Of course not. Do we like how, you know, the backstory and the end of it? But I think if we, if we cut off the how and the why, if it was a charter school that we had approved, and it ended up being an ASD school for some other reason, it would be a different conversation. So I just wish we could separate the two. The students are here, the students need the summer supports, we have the ability to provide the summer supports, we have the capacity with the staffing that we've already allocated. So there's no extra anything for us at this point. Am I correct? And so I think the rest of the commentary is very fair. Separate conversation, I think to Ms. Elrod's part, part of it is advocacy, but maybe it goes back to the kinds of questions we need to ask, right? In the charter approval process, in the charter denial process, right? Us, you know, and when we make the decision, right? Lesson learned for us, when we make the decision to not be the LOA, once we've denied and they've been approved, these are the kinds of things that we can find ourselves dealing with. Because it's not because we denied them the charter, it's because we chose to not be the LOA. So if we had become the LOA, this would be different discussion, correct? My misunderstanding?
Dr. Battle, if I may. If we were the LEA, they would be entitled to attend Promising Scholars.
Y'all could excuse my alphabet soup over here, okay? So yes, in the, since we're not the LEA, so again, let's be clear that it's not just because we denied the charter, it's because we chose to not be the LEA. Okay, so again, lessons learned for us. I think we get past this moment and then start to think more clearly about how we can be a little bit more strategic and a little bit more introspective and reflective about the about the impact of our decisions and what those kinds of conversations need to be on the front end from here to with our legislators and everybody else and their grandmother when it comes to finding ourselves. Because if it's not the pandemic, it's going to be something else. There's always going to be, and we've learned that the ASD is not doing, and I'm saying this publicly, is the recorder on? Yeah, the ASD is not doing a great job. This isn't the first indication that they're not doing the best for our students, right? And so I think it's a bigger conversation that we have. I think we get past this moment and then start to think strategically about how we begin to white paper, how we begin to, what are those things you put in the newspaper? There we go. How so smart tonight? Oh, my gosh, y'all are on it. How we start to elevate the conversation and bring more transparency to this process that have led us to this table having this discussion tonight. So I would like permission to call for the question and then encourage us to get into committee and have bigger conversation about.
I appreciate your request. I'll go ahead and allow Mr. Little because he was not able to speak. And then I have some updates for us as it relates to this conversation.
Dr. Gentry said it well. I'll leave my comment.
Okay, thank you. So I will say that I had the pleasure of meeting with the executive director, Sarah Morrison, of the state board. And what I realized very quickly is that we just don't have relationships with the people that we need to have relationships with. I think when I first got on this board five years ago, I would hear us making public statements or saying things on the record, and I thought there was a real record, or I thought that there were, I thought that the state board or the legislature actually watched what we did. Just to be honest, they don't. And not to say that they should, but they're disconnected from us, just like we're disconnected from them. So in late July, the state board will have their quarterly meeting in Nashville. I've asked for us to consider hosting a lunch for them, just to engage them. I mean, just to have regular conversation and to say to them, these are our issues. Because all they hear when we talk about charter conversations is the fiscal impact. I had to make it plain that, you know, my son is going to Jones and how different that is for him than a child that's going to a JT War or a child that's going to Aiken and Julia Green and just what having an increased number of schools will do to my son's education in the Pearl Cone cluster. And so, and she was very receptive. She was like, wow, thank you for that perspective. And so I think we just need to have those kinds of conversations. I think to your point, your point around advocacy and Ms. Masters, we need to not just have those, the letter writing campaign to the state legislature, but go ahead and consider doing what previous mayors have done and host the legislature for something. I mean, no, we can't host them for dinner because there's so many of them, but we could, we need to be having conversations with those education subcommittee members because they just do not know. I mean, I had one state legislator compare Pearl Cone to Lachlan, and I'm like, those are two different, not only are they in different sides of town, different levels of affluence, but different tiers. And so it's like, okay, we just really need to offer the olive branch. So I think us being more intentional with reaching out to the different types of state education players like the state board, but also the charter review board, because now the state board no longer reviews charter applications. So we need to engage both of them. We still need to engage the legislature, but we also need to engage the governor. I mean, we just, we have to be kind of, not attacking, but we have to be intentionally reaching out to and building those relationships. Because I'm telling you, the conversations that I've had the past couple of weeks have been very helpful in understanding why we feel so dismissed as a district. So, and to a larger point, you know, I taught in Elie's Band. It's always going to be a sore spot for me because those babies are going to their zone school. It was stripped from us, it was taken from us, but those babies, those families do not know. Again, it's not like these families are in a Hillsborough area where they have knowledgeable, loud advocates. These parents are typically just surviving, so they're not even, they don't know what thriving looks like. So they don't know that that zone school is not being managed by the Board of Education that they elected. So again, I will support this, but I do want us to be thinking about, how do we make sure that this doesn't happen in the future? How do we better advocate? How do we better explain what's going on so that we don't see this continually? And so that we don't have any more schools taken from us because we know that they aren't? It's hard, it is hard work to not just educate children, but to educate children in zone schools when everyone feels like they can do it better. So with that being said, thank you, Dr. Gentry, for calling the question. Thank you for the commentary. We'll go ahead and take our vote. Mrs. Player Peters, will you restate your motion?
I make the motion to approve contract 33, State Board of Education.
All right, we've had appropriate, it's been appropriately seconded, we've had discussion. Please raise your hand if you are in favor. All right, please raise your hand if you are opposed. Raise your hand if you are abstaining. All right, Mrs. Bobo, thank you so much. All right, we will now move on to the number two, mask protocol. Thank you. Dr. Battle? Is this a use thing?
What's the virtual school curriculum thing on here?
I'm sorry, say one more.
It was part of consent.
Well, that was part of consent. Sorry.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry. So two was not under consent, the mask protocol?
All right, don't listen to me.
It's not under consent. So who is leading this conversation around the mask protocol? Gotcha, okay. Thank you for that. All right, so we need a motion around the mask protocol. Do I have a motion? All right, I move approval for the mask protocol so we can have some discussion. We have a second. All right, we'll open discussion. Ms. Bush, were you?
I'm a little confused. I haven't heard the mask protocol. None of us have heard it. So are we going to state what the mask protocol is?
It was sent to us, and so we reviewed it, and then if we have questions.
Can it be restated for the public and the parents that are here?
Sure, okay. You don't have it with you?
And I think make it clear that it's promising scholars. This is not about the fall.
Chair, Buggs, we're going to put it up here on the screen. You have it in your packet.
Yeah, I know, I have it, I looked at it, but.
I get it.
This is for the public and parents that are attending and have spoken tonight.
Sure, so do we have any discussion around the mask protocol?
It needs to be, David, do you want to?
Did you have a question, Ms. Bush?
It needs to be read.
Ms. Bush, would you mind reading it?
No, David, you can come up and read it.
Okay, we'll rephrase. So as chair, as chair, Ms. Bush, if you would not like to read it, everyone can read it here. Is there anyone that would like to? This is.
No, because you, okay, if you're going to do a mask protocol, it needs to be stated on the floor for the public to hear, just like anything else we do. It still needs to be read.
But you don't want to read it? I got you, okay. Dr. Gentry?
Madam Chair, you make it big enough so we can move on, please. I'm old, thank you so much. This is the Promising Scholars Mask Protocol. The district is recommending the following MMPS mask protocol to begin on Monday, June 14th, after adoption by the Board of Education. All students participating in the Promising Scholars program are encouraged to wear face masks throughout the day. Masks are required when students are riding the bus, transitioning between locations in hallways and other common areas, and in group situations when social distancing is not possible. Masks are not required at any other time. Masks are required for staff members when transitioning with students between locations in hallways and other common areas and in group situations when social distancing is not possible. Masks are encouraged for staff members at all other times, but not required. All prior medical or other exemptions to the MMPS mask policy will continue. Masks are strongly encouraged for those with underlying health conditions. The above recommendations are based on balancing the declining rate of COVID-19 transmission in our community, the student teacher ratio for promising scholars, and current CDC guidance. This protocol is subject to change based upon new information and guidance.
Thank you for reading that, Dr. Gentry.
You are so welcome.
So now I reopen the floor for discussion. All right, Mrs. Masters and then Mrs. Elrod?
I just have a question. So if they're encouraged, like when they're sitting in class or outdoors but not required, I'm just wondering, especially with littles, what will be the protocol for, you know, how they hang on to their mask to then put it on out in the hallway and then take it back off? I just have these visions in my head of them like wadding up their mask and carrying it in their hand and then slapping it back on in the hall. So I'm just kind of wondering, maybe I've been around too many little kids, but I don't know, how are we going to manage all that?
And reflecting on the protocol with regards to the option to remove the mask indoors, in most situations, it will be because a student is stationary at their desk or working with a teacher so they're able to properly place their masks down. Same thing will go for protocols as far as outdoor mask wearing is concerned. We also have our COVID support that's continuing in our schools will be working closely with all of our promising scholar sites on protocols and observing additional supports around supporting students on removal and replacement of the mask. I also want to point out that, again, that's optional. So if a student or staff member chooses to continue with their mask on throughout the day, they're definitely able to do so, indoors and outdoors.
I just have visions of the playground littered with masks, you know?
Any other discussion? I'm sorry, Mrs. Elrod?
Thank you. Currently, the CDC's guidance, which we anticipate to change because it's based upon the majority of schools inside the country, is that students are wearing their masks inside? And of course, promising scholars is an optional program where parents had to agree that their students would wear a mask. So my follow-up is, is do we have a process for parents to unenroll into promising scholars if they're uncomfortable with this because they agreed and thought that this was going to be an environment where everyone was masked? Can they unenroll if this is something that they're uncomfortable with because of the change?
Promising scholars is an optional summer school experience, so there is no mandate or requirements for enrollment.
Okay, so do they just stop showing up? Or do they need to call the family?
Notification would be.
That would be preferred, would be my suggestion to these parents. Okay. So if this is going to be our masking protocol, it's my understanding that we're doing this in anticipation of likely changing CDC guidance because of the summer programs that will be happening and that it's currently based on the high head counts that we typically have inside of our classrooms. My concern is, of course, when we get into the fall and when we no longer have the flexibility and I guess we'll say blessing of a 13 to one head count, and when we're back to the typical 21 to 24 or whatever it might be head count. So I just want to make sure that we're clear. Is this for just promising scholars? And how are we making that clear to parents besides just the title?
So this language is titled Promising Scholars Masking Protocol. It should also be noted that the administration or the board can make a recommendation to shift our masking protocol in the event that we see a spike or need for us to mandate them in our schools. I think we should also acknowledge that we are seeing a decreased transmission rate, number of cases within our city. As you've already acknowledged, particularly in promising scholars, we are averaging about a 13 to one ratio in our schools, which is significant. And also, as of next week, students age 12 and older will be eligible to be fully considered, fully vaccinated. And our 16 and older student population has been eligible for vaccines for several weeks before that. So those are a few high points. We've also been in conversation with our partners at Mahari, in particular Dr. Hildreth, regarding where we are as a city with our transmission, with our mask protocol. And this is definitely being supported and as we're making progress as a city, making sure we have forward movement with our social distancing and all of our safety protocols that are in play. Again, because promising scholars, we do have the average student to teacher ratio. This is appropriate for us to give the option at this point for students to remove their mask, particularly when they're indoor and not transitioning or in large crowds.
I appreciate our flexibility. I want to make sure that we are still informative to our parents. I seriously do not suspect that there's any type of increase this summer. I would find that quite shocking. But I want to make sure that we have some type of protocol in place of if there is an increased need for some whatever reason, that we have some type of plan for that during promising scholars and, of course, in the future. And that we communicate it with an emphasis of that they're still strongly encouraged, particularly for promising scholars, because a lot of those families are under the impression that it was already going to be done because that was part of the agreement. But I am glad that we're being flexible and that we're paying attention and we're still talking with our experts and, of course, following the correct guidance. And yeah, that's really all I got.
All right, Mrs. Bush?
Yes, I am. I think parents that are still here and parents that are watching are a little bit at ease to see this protocol be an option for our students. I think we have heard, we have seen, this whole city has transitioned in an upward direction when it comes to getting back to some sense of normalcy. And our students should never, ever be put in this situation, again, without parental involvement, as you have heard tonight throughout this whole year, that parents have felt very much so neglected in making decisions for their children and this board and the administration not listening to their parent concerns, which is the reason why parents have been, has become so disconnected to our district and want to see more transparency and want to see more involvement. They want a seat at the table also. And I think it's, as a parent of an MMPS student, I feel the same way. So I am with them and I understand how this whole year has been a struggle for parents. Saying that, I just have a question. When it comes to the, I see hallways, are there any other situations with social distancing not being a possibility that the students have to wear their mask?
Yes, according to this press mask protocol, masks will be required on buses. They will still be full this summer. Hallways for transitions or any time they might be in a large crowd. So if there's any one time we need to pull groups of students together in auditorium, we'll have safety measures in the cafeteria as well. We will require a mask upon entry, and then once students are in class and seated and they can remove their mask, they have the option to remove their mask at that point in time.
And the teachers also?
Teachers as well. So our policy is consistent between students and staff.
Good, okay. And my last question, so in between that time, hallways, large groups and things like that, they're just carrying them in pockets or are they going to have them around their necks or how does that work? Because.
They will not be transitioning with them not on. So the only time, the only option they will have is either outdoors or when they're in their classrooms. So they will not be transitioning without their mask on.
Okay. All right, thank you for the question.
You're welcome. Mrs. Elrod?
Thank you. I just wanted to ask about how we're currently tracking COVID. Obviously, we're not doing the massive amount of tracking as we have been, but how are we going to continue to show that? And what is our process through promising scholars and I guess when the school starts? Do we have an update on that?
Yes, so we are fortunate that through our promising scholars experience for the month of June and the first of July, we have continued on with our nurses in our schools as well as our COVID support. So all of those supports are still in place, which we're able to collect our data and have the necessary conversations and make adjustments as needed. So while we'll be shifting in our mask protocol, we'll still have those supports on the ground in schools and the data to inform our decisions as we move forward.
That's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure. Okay.
Mrs. Bush?
And I have one last comment. So as we get closer to the school year, we'll be able to continue to monitor the mask mandate. And if cases are down and we are steady like we are now, we will possibly enter back into the school year with possibly this protocol or lessen the protocol.
That's correct. So we will continue to monitor. It could be very similar. If we see spikes, we could adjust, or if we see significant improvements, we could see a very different protocol going into the fall. But this, again, in the promising scholars experience over the next four weeks, gives us some experience and some data to help better inform our decisions as we move forward.
Thank you.
All right, so we've had a motion to accept the mask protocol. It's been seconded. All in favor, please raise your hand. All right, it is unanimous. We will move on to director's report. Thank you all for the conversation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In a moment, we'll be bringing up Dr. Paul Changis and Michelle Springer to give you some updates around the academic and SEO-focused outcome progress for our students over the last year. This pandemic has been challenging. It's challenged us as educators in many ways, and we know that we'll have some learning progress to address as a result of it. But we've also had some growth opportunities that we need to leverage going forward. And so we'll be leveraging all of our data and information to help better inform our planning over the summer as we're responding to our students' needs during promising scholars and as we kick off the 21-22 school year. On Monday, nearly 15,000 students were anticipated to walk through the doors of 71 promising scholars' locations throughout Davidson County, where teachers are going to engage them in rigorous but fun learning opportunities over the next four weeks. Additionally, our high school students have the chance to catch up on any grades of courses where they may have fallen behind this year or prior. So at this time, I would like to welcome up Dr. Paul Changis to give us an overview on our MAP scores and how we can use that data to ensure the success of our students as we're moving forward. Dr. Changis?
Thank you, Dr. Battle.
Thank you, Dr. Battle, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm going to be presenting an overview of our literacy and numeracy focused outcomes. This was the third MAP assessment of the year and the first one administered within our buildings in a secure setting. And the testing occurred in May and I'll be going into some more detail in terms of those results in just a minute. But let me point out first of all, that this, the MAP assessment is a key part of helping us support and monitor the rigorous and personalized learning experiences for all students, one of our core tenets. This disaggregated data is also critical to helping us identify the inequities among our students. In addition, MAP data is a key part of three of our focused outcomes. The growth data in literacy and numeracy is our primary measure in terms of looking at the progress of our students over time. This year, we used the February 2020 data as our baseline so that we could see progress over the past year prior to the pandemic and what's occurred over that past year through May. In addition, the MAP data is a key component for our, for our students transitioning from tier to tier and also looking beyond high school. We have assessment data that helps us not only look at current achievement, but project forward to other assessments such as the TCAP assessments or Ten Ready assessments and our ACT scores. MAP is also a key component in several of our signature initiatives. Last month, I addressed the personalized student dashboard. And as a reminder, MAP data and other assessment data were recently added to the parent portal as phase one of that personalized student dashboard. We also added behavior data, academic plan data and to the previously existing attendance and course information that was in the dashboard. And I'll add that we now have the May MAP assessment data as part of that student dashboard. It is live. So some of the key points from this assessment, the test was administered between May 3rd and May 21st, so we went right up to the end of the school year. As you're probably well aware, this occurred immediately following our TCAP testing window, which was from mid-April, April 21st to May 6th. And I should point out that historically, we have seen a bit of a dip in our scores in the May assessment, likely due to test fatigue for those students who are taking Ten Ready and following it up with MAP assessment. However, we felt it was especially critical this year to assess at the end of the school year in our buildings to get some indication of the actual progress that's occurred in the past year. And we know that TCAP scores don't come back until typically late summer. We wanted data that was actionable now. And I'll point out that our principals at the summer landing are using that data as part of their action planning process right now. That data also gives us baseline data for our promising scholars and will help us monitor the growth that they make over the summer. We had over 45,000 students tested in language arts and math and participation of 90% in both subjects. As I said, this occurred right after TCAP. We also had high test participation for TCAP. And I can't give you an exact number right now, but we feel pretty comfortable that we were above 80%, the number required by the state for us to be held harmless with state accountability. However, unless we get confirmation from the state before the end of next week, when the participation waiver is due, we will be filing a waiver just to be safe. But I want to say that our families and our schools really stepped up and participated heavily in testing. We still see some score inflation for students that were tested virtually, particularly in the early grades, but as was the case in January for the vast majority of students, we feel that these scores are a valid indicator of student achievement. The academic growth that we saw from pre-pandemic February of 2020 to May was below the national average, which that national average is based on norms established in a normal school year, pre-pandemic. We don't have data on what's happened nationally in the past year. Obviously, the assessments varied across the country. But despite all of the interruption, we still had over a third of our students, 41% in language arts, 36% in mathematics, that made growth that was equivalent to or, or greater than what we would see in a normal school year. And as observed in January, there was a slight widening in the achievement gap for our economically disadvantaged students, a few percentage points, but not for our students with disabilities or English learners. This was a case in both subjects and it was also the case when we removed scores that looked unlikely based on the growth data that we had. Those would be cases where there either was some inflation in scores potentially due to a virtual testing or a deflation in scores due to technical problems that occurred in a virtual setting. So we'll dig deep, more deeply into the individual subject area results. These are language arts scores. This first section looks at the achievement of our students in May. You can see in the first column, the number of students tested, then the median national percentile. And as a reminder, that number is, is telling how our typical student did compared to students nationally. That number is the percent of students nationally that's, in a normal year, that scored lower than our, our typical student did this year. So if you look across grades K through nine, we had 37, our typical student outscored 37% of students nationally. In a normal year, 50 would be the national average. But you also see at kindergarten, we did have higher scores and again, we had, we had a higher percentage of students in those grades with, with virtual testing that did have some, some inflation. The next set of data looks at growth from August, the start of the year to May. And this is how we would normally measure our academic growth in a typical year from, from beginning of the school year. And I'll just say, as, as a reminder, all of our students in August were tested in a virtual setting. So we had those issues that we had some concerns about the baseline. And that likely has impacted our growth scores when we had over 60% of our students in May testing in an in-school setting. So we have a situation here, particularly at those early grades where, where scores did appear inflated, that the growth is very minimal. A better indication of our growth over the past year, and this is why we addressed it as our focused outcome, is to look at the progress that occurred pre-pandemic February of 2020 to this past May. Now, the number of students tested, as you can see, is going to vary greatly in those early grades. As a reminder, in 20, the 2020, 2019, 2020 school year, we only mandated grades two through nine. So those would be our current third graders and above. If you look at the first column, that's the current grade level. So we're going to have fewer students who have multiple data points in those early grades. Those would be schools that chose to test in those grades, but it wasn't a mandate. But what you'll see is that our growth across those grades, we, across all grades, we had 41% of our students that did meet or exceed their national percentile compared to where they were over a year ago. That's over 12,000 of our students that made growth equivalent to or greater than we would see in a, in a normal school year. In mathematics, we see some similar trends. Scores in mathematics are a little bit lower than we saw in language arts. That's been a trend that we've seen over multiple years. Again, that's relative to the nation. But you know, we see about a third, 34% of our students exceeding the typical, our typical student exceeding about a third of the students nationally. Again, we see inflated scores in those early grades, particularly kindergarten, but a little bit at first grade as well. When we look at the growth from August, again, we see some, what are likely deflated scores in those early grades in terms of growth because of the, the virtual testing. But again, growth is, is not where it's been in a typical year. Normally, our median national percentile for growth is, is around 50 or higher, the national average. When we look at the data from February of 2020, we see that a little over a third, 36% of our students across all grade levels in mathematics, maintain their ranking to students nationally in terms of the growth that occurred in a normal school year. That's over 10,600 students. So we, the growth is not where it has been in most years, but it's not dramatically different than what we've seen historically. This is a different way of looking at the data. We know that, that when we have compared in prior years, from spring to spring, we also know that there's some, in a normal year, there's, there's some learning loss that occurs over the summer. This is obviously has been extended a bit in the past year. A different view of the progress that's occurred in the past year is to look at, at how our tiers compare in terms of the median national percentiles. These would be this year's second through fourth graders compared to second through fourth graders in 2020. And the blue bars are the current year, the gold bars are the prior year. And again, we, we see a little bit of, of a loss in terms of achievement, particularly in elementary and middle school grades. Again, those achievement scores are relative to a national norm that was established prior to 2020. The difference in the high school grades is much smaller. Another way of looking at achievement is to look at the percent of students in those top two quintiles, above the 61st percentile. These are the students that are higher achieving, that would typically expected, be expected to, to have a good chance of obtaining proficiency on a state assessment. And we see a little bit of a decline in elementary and middle and a slight decline in high school across grades, about four and a half percentage point difference. Mathematics, similar trends. The only exception, we actually had higher scores this year in ninth grade than we saw in ninth grade the prior year. But elementary and middle achievement is a little bit lower. Same thing when we look at the quintiles, we're lower in elementary and middle tiers, however, a little bit higher at the high school grades. With regard to our student subgroups, and this is looking at one-time measures of achievement, as we've seen in past years, that the differences across subgroups for one-time measures are quite significant, large differences from subgroup to subgroup. Particularly our English, our economically disadvantaged students with disabilities, English learners falling well below their peers in terms of achievement. We also see that our Asian and white students are above the national average of 50. Again, that's in a normal year. Our Black and Hispanic students, however, are well below that 50th percentile. Mathematics, similar trends in terms of wide achievement gap differences. And again, our math scores tend to be a little bit lower than our language arts scores relative to the nation. But when we look at growth, as is typically the case, we see less variation in terms of performance. Growth scores tend to be more consistent. There is one subgroup, economically disadvantaged students, that I mentioned earlier, lost some ground relative to their peers. 37.6% of economically disadvantaged students maintained or exceeded their national percentile ranking compared to a little over 43% of students who were not economically disadvantaged. But if you look at our students with disabilities, they actually scored higher than their classmates. English learners not only scored higher, but they exceeded the national average of 50%. Again, as they're learning the language, they are making, we've historically seen our English learners make good growth over time. In mathematics, again, less variation than we see for one-time measures. Again, our economically disadvantaged students lost a little bit of ground compared to their peers in terms of growth. But again, our students with disabilities and our English learners had higher growth than, than their classmates. Where does this leave us in terms of supports and next steps? Already available on our MNPS Promising Scholar website is our resources to support at-home literacy and math learning for families. We will be working in the next few months to identify ambitious but realistic targets and for MAP and TCAP in terms of looking at growth targets for our students. We want these targets to be not just maintaining our ranking, but what is it going to take for lower achieving students to get on the right trajectory toward future success? And we'll be, we've been compiling longitudinal data on our students over multiple years to help us look at, at the patterns that have occurred. We know there are students who have exceeded all expectations in terms of growth over time, that we want to, we want to find the right kind of measure that will be realistic for the majority of our students. And again, that's, that's a target that we will set as a baseline, but the conversations around goal-setting need to include families, need to include educators as we set those short-term and long-term goals. And then we'll provide families and staff training and support to access and interpret the MAP scores and other data that's available in our student dashboard. We want those, that dashboard to help facilitate the conversations between parents and teachers when they, when they meet on a regular basis. And we know that we have some interpretative materials that are already in the dashboard, but we anticipate rolling out some videos and other information soon. As a reminder, this visual is just, and I know it's not easy to see, but it's just a reminder that the MAP data is in the dashboard now. And as I've mentioned, we have the May data in there. We provide scale scores that'll allow us to look at growth over time, national percentile rankings and growth measures. Did your child make growth that was below, equivalent to, or above what would be expected But I also want to introduce a, a plan that we have to engage our stakeholders over the next few months in helping us develop the next phase of the student dashboard. And we'll be starting soon to engage families, students, community members, teachers. We will do this through a series of meetings of formal groups, but also focus groups that are representative of the population at large and also survey efforts, including surveys linked to the, the current dashboard for those families that go there. We want feedback on the current dashboard, what, what enhancements would you like to see? But we will also be developing some, some mockups from the feedback we've received so far and will continue to receive. We want to bounce those ideas off groups going forward. We'll have more detailed information about, about these opportunities soon, but we're, we're interested in, in starting to, to build the next phase of the dashboard. And finally, how the board can support us, continue to assist us in communicating the resources and opportunities available to family, including the, the dashboard, the student dashboard. And as, as always, policy, advocacy and funding are critical to monitor and address unfinished learning, especially at this critical time. And again, as I've mentioned on more than one occasion, we want to focus on growth and, and state accountability, accountability policy that looks at growth rather than one-time measures of academic achievement. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Springer.
Questions from this? Let me ask questions on this portion or do we want to wait till...
Go ahead, get through the presentation and we'll come back to the questions.
Thank you, Dr. Changis. Thank you, Dr. Battle, Chair of BUGS and the members of the board. Like academics, social emotional learning has and continues to... Like academics, social emotional learning has and continues to be an emphasis for Metro Nashville Public Schools. In fact, it is one of our focused outcomes. Very much connected to academics, as Dr. Changus mentioned earlier, with our focused outcomes, core tenets, and signature practices, SEL also is a focus. It helps us to re-envision our central office as a support hub and empower and equip our leaders, as well as our other core tenets. And there are specific strategies aligned to SEL that we'll speak to here in just a moment. To get us started, we must celebrate. We've had quite a year, and our schools have done the best with what they have, and they've done a great job. They have met the mark in many instances, especially around attendance and our navigator support. And so, this year, we wanted to make sure that we gave special recognition through our Blitz Awards to schools who were thriving in the areas of attendance and navigator. So, we always want to thank our principals and our schools for the work that they do on a daily basis. The key here is that the optimal conditions are required for learning, right? So, that means academics, I mean, that means attendance, and it also means behavioral outcomes. And so, for just a few moments, we'll talk through those. Here, what you see is that for our average daily attendance, we want our students to achieve satisfactory attendance. And we started the year off, like many of our schools throughout the country, working to keep our students engaged, and we've made progress. We started the year at 87.4% of our students engaged, and we ended the year with a 4% increase. And for that, we are thankful, and we know it is due to our interventions that were in place and the work of our principals and our support hub staff to make it happen through our interventions such as our attendance assessment, our collaborative referrals, and our attendance plans. As you can see, over the course of the years, the number of those interventions increased over time. And that's what you want to see for our schools. Related to behavioral outcomes, and the number of unique behavior incidents that you will see year over year, you'll see our first year, we started in 2019, and then in 2020. And then this year, you see we landed at 5,904 unique incident that involved about less than a percentage of our students. We want our students to be self-sufficient, have self-efficacy, develop those advocacy skills, and understand the concepts of community, including personal and social responsibility. And we know that we all have a role to play in that work. And so, we monitor these trends. Another trend I want to call out tonight are the percentage of incidents and suspensions by year. And what you'll note here is that there has been a steady decline from 2018, 19 to 1920 to 2021, when we think about incidents and suspensions by year. Same holds true for expulsions. Year over year, you see a decline in expulsions. And yes, we know that we've had an extraordinary year, and you'll expect to see differences in the data year over year. And we anticipate being able to continue to provide supports so these numbers stay in a space where we have optimal learn experiences in our classrooms. I want to shift now to transitions, which is also part of our focused outcomes. Our data, national data, local data tells us that with an emphasis on transitions, our students transitioning from elementary school to middle, and middle to high, and then from high to their post-secondary experiences is going to make sure that our students experience success. So, this year, we've had a heavy emphasis on all of our students, but especially our seniors. And we've been able to meet the mark and were able to make some progress in some areas. I want to call out a few of them now. 81% of our students took steps towards college. In the midst of it all, enrollment, FAFSA, T and Promise, you name it. 75% of our students completed the T and Promise application, which is a no easy feat. It took the support of our community, support of our schools, and our students' drive to want to take steps after their high school experience. And then lastly, 87% of our students submitted their FAFSA applications. All of that must work in tandem in order to make sure that our students have a quality after-high school experience. We want them to have lifelong success, and we've got to make sure that we've set up the supports for transitions to be able to make that happen. And that work doesn't stop now, that the graduations have ended. We're continuing the supports for our seniors through Promising Scholars, through credit recovery, dual enrollment. So, we want to make sure our seniors land in a good space. And now, I'm transitioning to our signature initiatives because it all is coupled together to ensure that those optimal conditions are right and ripe for the academic to move forward. So, first, speaking of navigators, you all are familiar with that support that we've provided, that one-on-one check-in with our students. And I want to emphasize the fact that we've been keeping the pulse through our dashboard. As Dr. Changus mentioned, our personalized dashboard will continue in that trajectory, identifying any needs that our students have and so that we can respond most immediate to those needs as they arise. This year, we've had over 350,000, actually more than 350,000 check-ins for our students, and we look forward to enhancing the work for next year. In addition, it'll take the supports and interventions such as our signature initiatives, such as the virtual help centers. At the end of the year, we served almost 17,000 families on their tech needs. Families came to those health centers for a variety of needs, and we wanted to make sure that we met those needs. And we will continue to do just that. So, this summer, for those of you that may not know, we're continuing the virtual help center support. Monday through Friday, at the schools that are listed, Pearl, Maplewood, Glen Cliff, and Hillwood High School, our families can come and get the support that they need. In addition to that, in the fall, we want to expand so that we will encompass our SEL expanded supports and partner with our enrollment centers and increase our community and parent outreach through our centers. So, great things are ahead. What we also know is that we have a charge from Dr. Adrian Battle, so that every student is known. And it is up to us to set the right conditions in every school, every day, and in every classroom. So, here's how we think of this. We think of this as coordinated efforts for collective impact. We want transition plans for all of our students as they go from tier to tier. We want them to include specific experiences for those students. We want them to have goals, and we want them to have specific plans to be able to support those transitions. And many of you know that we are executing on our advocacy centers. We believe though, these two power moves will get us in the right space to ensure that every student is known. And we thank you for your continued support, and we will forge ahead to ensure that SEL continues to remain a focus in Metro Nashville Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Springer. And with that, Madam Chair, we'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. All right, we have questions. This is up for discussion. Ms. Poopa Walker?
This is for Mr. Changus. Is it doctor? Is it mister?
Doctor.
You can just call me Paul.
Okay. So, I was curious about, so the last MAP assessment, you had kids take it both virtually and in person. Did you see a difference in those scores?
So, in terms of growth, very minor differences, slightly favoring our in-person learners by, in the neighborhood of two or three percentage points. There were differences, self-selection in terms of achievement going in and going out. The students that were in virtual learning had higher test scores going, at the beginning. If you go back to February of 2020, they had higher median national percentiles. They also had higher median national percentiles at the end of the experience. But the growth was virtually, you know, small difference. This is consistent with the findings of the Tennessee Educational Research Alliance at Vanderbilt that looked at results from six districts across the state. They did not find significant differences in growth between virtual and in-person learners.
Wow. Okay, so I want to ask you quickly about the language arts and mathematics results by grade level. So, overall, 31% of our students were proficient? Would you say that's correct in May of 2021 in literacy overall? This is page three. Our slide, whatever that, I don't know what the slide.
Which slide was that again? It's five.
Five.
Almost there. Okay, so.
The average, right, is 31% of our kids were in the fourth or fifth quartile?
Yeah, yeah, 31.8% of our students were in the top 40% nationally. In a normal year, 40% of students nationally would be in those top two quintiles.
In a normal year, nationally?
Yes, in a normal year nationally.
In a normal year for us, where are we on that?
We're typically more in the 35% range, a little below the national average.
And then, so, would you classify that as losing ground? I mean, I would classify that as losing ground, wouldn't you say?
If you're talking about losing ground compared to a normal year, it is a little bit lower. What we don't know is how this compared to what happened nationally in 2021. We don't have data that's going to, all of the norms, we actually, with the MAP assessment, went to new norms last year that were established based on the 2018, 2019 school year. And all the analysis was released in 2020. I don't know that any test company is going to try to norm this year. Now, we will, when we get TCAP results, we'll be able to see how our students did relative to students in Tennessee, but that'll be a little while.
Is it possible to get a breakdown of the other three quartiles of how, where kids were on that? I'm just curious how many were in the first and second versus like third, fourth, fifth?
Can certainly provide that.
Okay, I think for me, obviously, I think for this board.
And actually, I can give you some of that data. I mean, I do have a quintile breakdown. I'll just take a second to tell you that when we look at English Language Arts, we had across grade levels about 40% of students in language arts that were in the first quintile. That's only slightly above the national average. But again, we do have a little bit of score inflation occurring at some grades. So, if you look at, if you look at elementary, middle school grades, we got up to as high as 45% of students in that bottom quintile.
Almost half of our students were in the bottom quintile.
Yeah, yeah.
So, that should be alarming to this group, right? Half of our kids were, almost half were in the bottom. Now, I recognize that we had all kinds of challenges, but I will be curious to see how that compares to T and Ready scores, if it correlates, you know, if there's.
And just keeping in mind that it's a comparison to pre-pandemic scores and not.
Totally get it. Either way, I just think, obviously, urgency is, for me, is real about these numbers. So, just looking forward to seeing what goals we set and how we're going to meet those. Thanks.
All right, Dr. Gentry?
Yes, I'd like to go back to the forward. I think you had some strategy slides. So, now that we've seen this data, there were some plans, right? So, I'd like to fast-forward to that. Because I think we just need to be honest, and we've had this conversation before. We had this conversation in preparing for the director's evaluation that things were a little off, right, in this past few rounds of testing. But that's not, and I'm very adamant about this as well, that's not a story you can tell to a parent, and it matter a whole lot, right? At the bottom, at the end of the day, they're looking at numbers. And so, I just want to, if you can just walk us again, just one more time, through just the strategies, Dr. Battle, if you would, and if you would rather point it back to Dr. Changus, I don't really have passion. But I think now, if we would just re-listen to these through that ear, right, that we're looking at numbers and we're comparing them to pre-pandemic when things were, for whatever normal meant then, were normal, right? And then, do we see these strategies as really addressing, right? So, again, the variables are so many now, and the environments are not standard. We don't have consistent environments for testing. We don't have consistent methodologies, really. So, in different environments, they were tested in different, right, different ways. We know we had some parental coaxing in some of the situations, because parents just didn't know. They had not been a part and been in the testing environment, and they didn't view that any differently than any other assignment potentially. So, I know we've got a lot of variables there, but I just want to make sure that there's a comfort level, that the strategies are to understand what the loss, really, and without me looking at this, I'm just thinking, right, that we need to have strategies that give us some clarity of what the loss was, and not just in numbers, but where are we, right? So, what areas were kids sliding? And regardless of whether it's because of inflated grade, then that's a whole another conversation, but where was the sliding taking place? And what strategies, I would say, including time during Promising Scholars, is going to help us kind of get students back to base? Because the most we could hope for is to get us back to where we were, right? So, we still may see no growth if we look back to, we go back to compare the next set of scores to pre-pandemic. We may just get kids back to where they were. And then, how do we get them pushed from there forward, right? So.
Yeah, a couple of things in response, and I think Dr. Changus hit on three of those steps, particularly thinking about summer. I think it is encouraging that we do have a Promising Scholars program, so we're not leaving students at the finish line. The learning and the support continues for us to intervene where students are, which is why it was so critically important for us to administer this third MAP so that we had the most up-to-date information to be responsive to. There is a lag in getting the T and Ready data back in our hand for us to plan around. So, that's one area. I would also point out that, actually, this week, our principals and our administrators are using MAP data to create action plans for their students because I would caution us to take, lump everything together in percentages, because this is really about every student being known. So, we're trying to drill down to the individual student level. Because when you do that, we might have a very different picture here about where our students started and the progress that they have made, even if they did not move quintiles over this past year. So, we're digging down as deep as we can go in the student level to respond to our student needs during Promising Scholars, which I'll remind you, even before the legislation, we were planning to hold some experience for our students and planning for the upcoming school year. I think to your question as well, Dr. Gentry, it's important for us to point out our signature initiatives that are in play. We anticipated that we might have some learning progress, challenges in some of these areas, which is why we launched initiatives around individual tutoring for our students, which will be kicking back up and starting again this summer. So, we will continue to work with our students, which is also why we've launched our supports around Khan Academy, the supports there, at-home learning support, as well as training for our staff and our literacy reimagine work. So, we were anticipating where we might have some challenges, given that we've been progress monitoring across the entire year. And so, the good news is that we do have the month of June, four weeks, to continue to work with our students, get additional data, help them make additional progress, and then be prepared for responding, again, under the umbrella of every student known once we kick off at the start of the school year. And so, I'll just pause for just a second. Dr. Changus, is there anything you want to add? Dr. Bellamy, did I forget something that should be noted in this moment?
And Dr. Bellamy can weigh in. I'll just add that, you know, with our multi-tiered systems of support, we try to address all the specific skill deficits that we see. That's a normal process. There are other assessments that we have that drill deeper into the specific skills that students are struggling with.
And one other thing I want to acknowledge, while we wanted to leverage our time with our principals this summer, is that there are lots of nuances that go along with this data, and we wanted to be side-by-side with them to help them understand those correlations and the alignment based upon where students were and correlation to their growth and achievement scores. And so, we wanted to make sure the right supports were in place so that we were interpreting the data accurately as well and responding accordingly.
We have Mrs. Elrod, and then Ms. Player Peters, and Ms. Masters. Then Mr. Little, so, gotcha.
Thank you, I was finishing writing a note. So, we are, we have this information on the dashboard, and we have all agreed that we think that that's wonderful and, you know, available to parents. Do we have, or are we going to be able to have the ability? Do we have, or are we going to be able to have the ability to see the percentage of parents that access this information and then reach out to those parents that have not accessed it? I mean, I think it's important, we, I do agree with the every student known. But every student can only be known sometimes if their parent is also known. And we only know that if we're able to track it. So are we gonna be doing that?
We, we do have the capacity. And I have not gotten a report from, from our IT department in the past few weeks, but we were only, only about a quarter of our parents were accessing this as of a couple of months ago. We hope as we put more information in there and, and do more of a, provide more resources to families and communication. And we are working on a communication plan that as we go into the new year, we will see those numbers go up. But, but your point is, is a critical one. We, we need to get this into more hands.
And we also hope that through the engagement opportunities over the next few months, as we gather insight, input from our stakeholders about what will be useful to them and what they would like to see in the dashboard, they will also encourage parents to sign up knowing that this, you know, great resource is available to them.
I think there is, or there are some parents definitely that are not aware that it exists because it was towards the end of the school year and all the other many reasons and factors that would pass into that. So I'm glad to know that we have a communication plan with that. To go along with that, I appreciate on slide 12 that we had the plan or the suggested kind of plan for the stakeholder engagement. I think that's key to whatever our goals are. And I'm glad to hear that we were gonna set our goals based upon not only what the scores are that we're seeing, but also what our teacher input is and of course, parent input. I didn't notice anything in here about parent-teacher conferences or anything along those lines. Are we planning on going to that granular level?
Um, yes, so two separate things. This is just the engagement sessions and building out phase two of the personalized student dashboard, which this doesn't go as far as the parent-teacher conferences dates. But we are looking at structures and protocols that help better inform and prepare both our staff and our stakeholders, our parents and students, around the effective use of those parent-teacher conferences, what data we should be looking at, how to interpret those scores, and how to align supports to help accelerate student outcomes.
Because I know that we've had the discussion more than once of parent-teacher conferences in the future are gonna be kind of side by side with this dashboard. And so I think that that's great news, so parents can be involved and informed, but also that there's some guiding conversations in those conferences. So I hope that that continues. And I appreciate you providing this to us.
Thank you, Mrs. Player Peters.
How long would it take to get the test scores to our comparative districts or other school districts of how this, how they test it throughout the school year? So we, I guess my initial, like, you want to isolate this year to a certain extent. So how do we compare our test scores from this pandemic year to other school districts? When we get the information to see a comparison prior pandemic, during pandemic, and then also post?
Are you referring to MAP or TAN Ready or both?
Oh.
Dr. Chang, if you want to take a stab at it.
I'll start with TAN Ready. We anticipate that probably sometime in mid, late July, we'll start to get some, some statewide data to compare our, our test scores to. As far as data on a national level, I'm not as optimistic that we're gonna have good comparison data. I've been involved with the Council of Great City Schools pretty much from, from the start of the pandemic till now. Phone calls every other week with other researchers and assessment departments. And because of the differences in the way schools were set up and the way they assessed, it's gonna be hard to, to pull all that together and to, it's more apples to oranges, I'm, I'm afraid. I think the, the TAN Ready TCAP data will probably get, be the best data we have in terms of comparison data.
Thank you.
All right, Mrs. Masters, then Mr. Little, and then Mrs. Tyler.
So my first question is just, will we be in school instructing children at every level how to access the dashboard themselves?
So we are building out structures. We're trying to really leverage input of our staff and our other stakeholders around how to do this best. Let's be honest, we've been, with between parent-teacher conferences and how we leverage data in the past, it's been a struggle for us in communicating and keeping everyone up to date with the information. But that is something that we've been discussing on how we can build the structures out, that everybody's empowered. The staff has the necessary training and information and log on, our parents and our students. So we're definitely thinking about that area and planning around how to move everyone forward and in that direction.
Cool, cool. I just, I know one of my kids had a little notebook in first grade where she tracked all her data herself. And that was just very empowering for her. And my, my second question is, it's around the SEL presentation, actually. I was just looking at these numbers. I mean, and yes, the suspension rates have gone way down and the expulsion rates have gone way down because only about half of the kids were in, in, physically in school. So I'm just wondering, how are we going to balance to be sure that, you know, at the end of this next school year, that we're able to sort of appropriately demonstrate that we're still headed in the right direction with those metrics? Even though, I mean, we know it's gonna be higher next year because we're gonna be in person all year.
Great point. I mean, it's all within context and understanding the type of year we had, having half of our students in person versus virtual. So those are all areas that we've kept in mind. Some of the work that this board should be proud of is your priorities going into next year, knowing that we will be increasing access around our advocacy centers. And I know we're pending final approval from Metro Council. But pending that that is approved, that will be an additional support, expanded support in our schools. We've also, through some of our ESSR funds, already started to expand some of our mental health supports in our schools. You also saw many, many strategies around how we're gonna redesign, planning to redesign our AOCs, looking at our student to staff ratios in the area of counseling and with our psychologists. And so pending where we are with our operating budget in a few weeks and our ongoing conversations around how we'll leverage ESSR smartly and strategically, not to, to avoid those funding cliffs that we are all aware of, we'll continue to expand upon that. But that is, this board's number two priority is around the academic and the SEO integration. And so I'm very proud and very optimistic about being able to implement and execute upon those strategies as we move into next school year.
And then just one more. I just want to make sure I heard you correctly. So you've been, principals have been meeting, you've been meeting with principals to use MAP data to create plans for children at the individual level. Something some might call a individualized plan of sorts for every child. I'm trying to think of different, you know.
The SORIS, okay. Let me be clear, the term is student, a personalized student dashboard. So we are leveraging our student personalized dashboard to, under the umbrella of every student known. And that's what we've been putting before our principals and our school teams as our charge, that we have to continue digging deep around making sure that every student is known. And this is not work that happens overnight. And so we're building out our structures. We're looking at our instructional practices. We're looking at our systems. We're looking at our leadership all across the district to ensure that we're moving in that direction as quickly as we can to ensure we have those protocols of our data assessment to ensure every student is known and that we're responding correctly.
So if I am Dr. Dempsey at the magical and wonderful Goodlettsville Middle School, I'm looking at this data in relationship to every child along with my team and creating individual plans for those children, okay?
And we're establishing protocols. And I, I had an opportunity to speak with all principals today. And we talked specifically about our charge of every student being known. We've thought, we've talked about that through the lens of our focused outcomes, our signature initiatives. And so they rolled up their sleeves immediately today and started to dig into our curriculum. They will be doing some action planning. We're really proud of some of the protocols that have been developed under Dr. Mason and his team with the executive directors of what they will look like as, as we move forward. This will be ongoing training over the summer. We, we're, we've got many, many days, weeks, I guess I could say, of planning with our principal teams in preparation for next school year. At the same time, we have a level of this planning and digging into our data happening with our promising scholars. So we are asking a lot of our school teams, but they are stepping up to the plate and doing what's necessary because we're in agreement that this is about every student being known. And there's lots of excitement around where we're going with our personalized student dashboard.
Thank you. All right, Mrs. Tyler, Mr.?
I think Mr. Little.
I'm so sorry, all right. So Mr. Little, Mrs. Tyler, Mrs. Bush, Mrs. Poopa Walker.
So question, as I look at the MAP data and we think about new state laws around retention in third grade, how do we, is there a process on how we explain to parents how we can recover their kids so they don't face the interventions for the new state law? So how do we talk to parents around this MAP data? Because even, you know, before the board, I just learned the difference in a 18 and a 21, which 21 makes you college-ready, so it's like a C+. So how do we help parents understand this data?
Dr. Chang.
As, as Dr. Battle indicated, this is a process and will take some time to get all of the information that you're talking about in, to the right parties. But I can tell you that when you talk about a 21 on the ACT, we have data from both TAN Ready and from MAP that is highly predictive of future success. And there are, I, I mentioned earlier, setting aggressive, ambitious targets that would move students on the right trajectory. And one of the things that we've been looking at are, what are the projections of students in third and fourth grade and, and on up toward a 21 on the ACT? We can actually get that information from, from our value-added assessment system. And what, so what kind of growth, it may take multiple years to get students on that trajectory, but what kind of aggressive growth plan can get us there? But I just, I, I want to manage expectations in terms of, first, we have to help people understand some basic terms in terms of what these test scores provide. Then the next step is the goal-setting and, and, and helping us jointly between families and educators talk about short-term and long-term goals for students. But that's the goal, to get, to get to that successful outcome by the time students leave us at the end of high school.
Indeed, Dr. Chang. And just as a reminder, that particular piece of the legislation will go into effect a year from now.
All right, Mrs. Tyler.
I just want to take a minute to go back and get a little bit of clarity on the norming. So it's my understanding that when we have a standardized test, it is, you know, rolled out to a representative group of students and then they put their scores on a bell curve. They check to make sure that their, the results are valid, and then they break it down. Is that correct or am I wrong?
That, that's the basic process. It's, it's taking, again, a nationally representative sample. They look at various student demographics at each grade level. And we make comparisons to growth, to, to achievement and growth that occurred in a fixed year. It's not the current year, but it may be last year in this case, or two years ago, or it may be in some cases, five years ago. Nationally, the trends don't move dramatically over time, but they do move a little bit. So most companies re, reestablish norms every five or six years.
That was gonna be my next question, that's good. So when we break that bell curve up into quintiles, what, we have names for those quintiles, right? Like on grade level progressing, have we named those quintiles or not?
Well, most companies will, will refer to them as below, I'm sorry, low, low average, average, high average and high. It's, again, it's just a relative comparison on that bell curve. And, and nationally, there would be 20% of students in each of those quintiles.
So if the third quintile would be the average, why are we only looking at the data from our fourth and fifth quintiles?
Well, that's what we've, what we've been reporting. We actually have the data on all five quintiles, and I'll be happy to share that. But the reason we go, have focused on the fourth or fifth is because the, the state of Tennessee has set a very high bar on TAN Ready that's not just being on grade level so much as it is being college and career-ready. And we have found that being at the 50th percentile or that normal range, your, your chances of being successful on, on TAN Ready, being on track or mastered, are less than 50%. It's when you get up into the Q4, Q5, the top two quintiles, that you're likely to, to, to reach state's definition of proficiency.
So are state's definition of proficiency basically says 60% of the students are not going to pass?
If, if you look at it from a, compared to a national assessment, yes. Again, they're using the data that's fairly consistent with what we've seen in the National Assessment of Educational Progress, or NAP, which is telling us that the majority of students nationwide are not, not reaching the high standards that would be equivalent to a 21 or higher on the ACT. But, you know, we, as a state, we moved from some of the lowest to some of the highest standards in the country.
Okay, just, bell curves are very frustrating to me because by definition, there must be people who fail. There must be. And I, I would like for us to have a system that doesn't require failure. So I, so if we are looking at our kids that are in that third quintile, even though the idea is that they won't score well on the ACT moving forward, but technically, they are actually on grade level, is that correct? Nationally, they are on grade level.
They are. I, I've, I've had, I've had this conversation with, with others at the state because there are a lot of different definitions of what it means to be on grade level. At one time, the standard definition was you're at the 50th percentile or higher. And, but, but the state has moved in a direction of saying, that may not be good enough to, to guarantee future success. So we, you know, we're, we're shooting at a higher bar in Tennessee when we talk about being on track or mastered. When I, but while we're focused on the percentage in Q4 and Q5, when we look at trajectories of students, we're looking at the students in the bottom quintile, getting them to the second quintile.
Yes.
You know, and, and the following year, maybe to the third quintile. It, it's trying to make growth over time that will get us to those, to those higher standards that will guarantee success. Getting, getting from one quintile to the next may not be a, a one-year process. It may be multiple years. We want to continue to see students' relative standing improve. And to your point, the bell curve is, shouldn't be the defining factor. It's what, what does it take in terms of proficiency on this test to, to ensure success? That you have the standards and the skills that are necessary.
And has anybody done any sort of study to, that looks at that third quintile to find out what their outcomes in life are? If they are failing in life or if they have jobs, they paid their bills, they have, they don't go to jail? They don't, I mean, are these people failing in life if they are on grade level?
That's a very broad question. I will tell you that I don't think you'll find that the majority of, of our, of our graduates are failing. It, it depends on your definition, but a lot of, I, I could assure you, I, I know of a lot of examples of people who are gonna be just fine in the third quintile and maybe even the second quintile. Again, we want to get students to the point where they have options going forward. But no, the, 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 students in the third quintile are gonna look like the average American student at that grade level.
I just, I really struggle with using these tests as a measurement of competency when they're designed to have people who will not meet the measurement. And the way they are created is to have people who are failing. And to me, it should not be a designation of let's find who has failed. But it should be a designation of where are we finding this grade level? And then how are we moving? Like, for example, how wide is the bell curve? Is it, is it a very wide where this, the second quintile and the fourth quintiles are very spaced apart? Or is it a skinny bell curve where, you know, there might just be one question difference?
And I'll just, I'll just put it this way. There, there are enough items on these tests that there's gonna be some variation. But I share a lot of the same concerns about using normative data. I think the point for us is to drill deeper into the content, what standards, what skills are, are lacking and address those. If it happens to move, we want students to, to get to a point where they're doing well on these tests because they do correlate to ACT. because they do correlate to ACT scores and other measures. But it's not, we shouldn't be thinking about it as how many items I got right. It's what skills, what standards I should address. And that goes to the other point of with multi-tiered systems of support, we drill even deeper. When we find a student who may be lacking in an area, we can go more specifically into those, into those specific skills.
And if I can add, Ms. Tyler, I think, you know, to your point here, one of the greatest benefits of the MAP assessment is the generation of the RIT scores. Ready for Instruction Today is what that stands for, so that our teachers can see, you know, after the assessment, where relative to those skills and those standards, where our students need the scaffolding or ready for their push or that enrichment. And I'm just, you know, speaking as a previous instructional leader in a building, that was so valuable to us to get that data and really keying in and focusing on that instruction, immediate adjustment and instruction in the classroom.
Yeah, no, I agree that there needs to be longitudinal and you need to be able to see where you're going. I don't necessarily think we need to make our students feel like they're failures if they're in that third quintile because they're not. And it is disingenuous to say that they are failing because they are not in the above-average quintile. And I feel like that is something that has been used as a scare tactic to make us feel like we have to teach even closer to the test so we can get more growth. And I have a quote that comes from a researcher who says, "I have reviewed more than 300 studies of K-12 academic test. What I have discovered is startling. Most tests used to evaluate students, teachers and school districts predict almost nothing except the likelihood of achieving similar scores on subsequent tests. I have found virtually no research demonstrating a relationship between those tests and measures of thinking or life outcomes." So when you hear people debate the use of tests in schools, the talk usually assumes that the only alternative to the current approach is no testing at all. But that's not true. The problem is these tests have been put up as the only marker and the one that matters, the one that lets a teacher get tenure or not, the one that says whether a school district is failing or not. And they're not correlating to life outcomes. They are important information that we need to make sure we are moving our students along. But they are not the end-all, be-all of how well we are educating our students.
All right, Mrs. Bush, Mrs. Poopa Walker, Mrs. Elrod, Mr. Little.
You before me? Oh, okay, okay. Thank you. I was just thinking about something and it's just a thought. I know that now we have two of our student school board members that are coming aboard. And I'm not sure, Dr. Battle, that's something that we could look at as far as incentives for our students to be more involved with the process of this student dashboard. Because what I found during the process of the Florida Virtual Learning is that a lot of our families and our parents, they were so disconnected to the program because they didn't understand it. And they were so confused on how to navigate through FBLL or what it's called, Florida Virtual Learning, yeah. And so I actually told my student that he was responsible for giving me information. And I did it on a weekly basis after I found that he was pretty much failing when they first started. And so it was hard for me to also navigate because it was so many different folders. There was a lot going on internally with this, with this platform. So my recommendation is that we have some type of incentive for our students, especially our EL students, because they depend on, those parents depend on their students to bring information because of lack of not knowing English. They don't understand, but our students are so smart that they, they know how to navigate through the system. So my thought is, is we, even on a school level, principal, teachers, that we take time out, at least if it's not once a month or whatever the case may be, and we train our students on how to get on this dashboard so that they can best go back and advise their parents to be more responsible. Because I do feel that students do take a lot of responsibility once we make them accountable. And we need to start doing that, especially where we are right now. So this dashboard is going to be so important for us to be able to gauge and be able to move these students forward and be able to identify their weaknesses and their strengths. So I really, really do highly recommend that, you know, before we left for our virtual learning, if we would have had the students in front of their teachers right before this, before things spiked up and they had to be virtual, they would have been taught how to go through the process of getting on the system and understanding it so that we wouldn't have been nine weeks into it before they understood it. So I was just, I would just make a recommendation that we train our students to get on the dashboard. We have the two student board members that are coming aboard. Maybe they can also impress upon their peers on how to use it and encourage them and keep putting that forth in effort to make sure that all our students are trained from middle to high school. I know it's a little bit harder for our elementary students, but because we're going to be utilizing this dashboard moving forward, this will be a great opportunity to get the students involved so they can learn. They are so tech savvy that they know how to get on a system like this and be able to understand what their needs are and what the supports they need because they know how to go and ask questions and get help and also show their parents what's happening. So I think that's a really good idea to also get the students involved so they can get their parents more involved. And that's, that's something I feel that helped me with my son. So just a suggestion, maybe we can have some incentives to have our students to get more involved with the dashboard so that that way we can kind of help minimize the lack of use for this particular dashboard. So that's my comment.
All right, Mrs. Poopa Walker.
Just a quick Promising Scholars question. We're, are students going to be pre- and post-assessed for Promising Scholars, Dr. Battle?
Yes, they will be.
Is it, what are y'all using?
Dr. Changis, you want to come up and give the specifics?
We are administering a test that we're required to administer from the state. It's a short 10-item test for English Language Arts, 10-item test for mathematics.
Seriously? Okay. All right, thanks.
And we'll get it in five years.
Does 10 items mean 10 questions?
Yeah, 10, 10 questions in each subject.
All right, Mrs. Elrod, then Mr. Little.
Thank you. I have a follow-up question to my colleague's just recent question. The 10 items for math and the 10 items for ELA, are we putting those on the dashboard or no? Are those being given to parents in any type of way? I guess it's really maybe the better way of asking that.
Wait, Dr. Changis, I'm sorry.
I'll just, at this point, we don't know what the results will look like. I'll just, I'll just give you my personal opinion. I think we have better data already on where our students are than we're going to get from, from this test.
I do not disagree.
Okay. And if I can just add, this is also the danger of mandating one assessment, one approach to all school districts. So again, going back to Dr. Changis's presentation, the continued advocacy for the LEA to be able to make informed decisions around what's best for our students is always welcomed and appreciated.
Thank you. My next question is about the Navigator dashboard. So my question is, did we use these information and this, these data points on Slide 26? Do we use them to continue any type of services during the summer? Like particularly the food insecurity or anything like that? Did we do any follow-up to do a continuation of Navigator services through the summer?
All right, Dr. Springer.
Thank you for your question. For the summertime for Promising Scholars, what we have in place is a similar type of assessment for our students. We are tracking their needs. Their, their teachers will be informing their appropriate persons of whatever needs that may arise and we will meet the need accordingly. Any outstanding needs that took place and were identified during the school year should be addressed and we will continue to monitor those needs as well. We do have food sites that have been set up throughout the city that will continue to provide those more basic needs like food and the like.
Got it. On that note, I should say that Cole, who y'all all met, the lovely Mr. Ched Hagepath, Hagepath, last week, Cole is one of those locations, so I appreciate that. Are we planning on still starting Navigator next year? And if so, when would be our first touch point with parents?
Great question. We are planning with our, planning to continue our signature initiative around our Navigators for next year. In addition to what Dr. Springer has just shared around our continuing work around Navigators, schools are also adding additional layers of support into their school support system. So schools have opted in based upon the needs of their students to have leaders working throughout the summer, staying in contact with students and following up with their needs in various ways. There's one contact, there's teams of teachers working throughout the summer. So I'm really excited about us being able to leverage some of our federal funds and that space at the school level. In addition to that, we kicked off Navigators last year in the middle of a pandemic. So we did delay just a little bit as we focus on the SEO initial needs when we rolled in, but we will start at the beginning of the school year with our push around our Navigator's support across all of our schools. It will be an expectation and alignment to our focused outcomes.
Okay. And then lastly, I wanted to say some appreciation for keeping the virtual help centers open during Promising Scholars. Personally, our family visited one yesterday. So I appreciate it and I know it was helpful and it was actually busy when we went there, so thank you.
Mr. Little, sorry.
And so many thoughts. I think the first thing that I just wanted to address it is, it's becoming too Nashville's. And the questions I have is just to make sure when I talk to parents and talk to kids, it's, it's, it's a difference. Somebody once told me there's always going to be a bottom 5% in our school system there, as long as we have the ASD. But when you realize and look at some of the trends, there are some students who go to a bottom 5% elementary, middle and a high school right here in Nashville. And then we also look at how the income is changing. Right now, you know, the price is going up, the cost of living. And so I think when I ask the questions around, like explaining it to parents, there's like a huge disconnect. And I think we got to make a, a huge effort to reach the families. And we got a lot of protocols in place. And so every time I get ready to say something, you guys have good response. But I just want to continue to press upon, like, there are people in Nashville who are struggling and have been struggling for generations. And as, as I sit up here, even as I listen to a lot of this information, I mean, as much as I'm trying to dig in, it goes over my head. And so I think in order to be successful, we got to meet every person where they are. And we realize that every person in Nashville makes different amounts of money, they live in different communities. And as I remember Atlanta after I graduated college, it was two Atlantas. It was like the new Atlanta that was booming. And then it was the old Atlanta, which never had a chance to access the wealth that was being pumped into the city. And so as we look at Nashville, we got to say, how do we help the least of them? And like, how do we go all in? And so it's on us too, but I think you guys got to realize that as you guys on the governance model, as you're communicating, you do first have to realize there is a problem. And just to interject just a little bit, one person told, just in public comments, said we shouldn't have critical race theory. And I was like, I love reading. And I remember reading about Hannibal in elementary school. And they told me he was a Caucasian man riding elephants in Africa. And it wasn't until I was at my grandmother's house and she had like the black calendar, till I realized that Hannibal was really a black man. And so it's, that's all over the place. I just really wanted to address that because attending Metro National Schools, I read about Hannibal and it was a misrepresentation of him. And so I think we have this opportunity with the resources, with the new team. Like this is like the All-Star team, but we really got to dig in deep to the people who are suffering the most.
That Budweiser calendar cleared up a lot of things for me too.
I know exactly which one it is.
You all for the discussion? I believe that was, I'm sorry, is there, are there any other questions for Dr. Battle and her team? I will say this is one of those times where we talk about data and unfortunately, the community at large won't see this. It's like the room cleared out as soon as we started talking about data. But I need parents, I mean, I'm actively trying to join parent groups right now. Like I'm begging people to take me on, like, please teach me how to be a parent of a student in metro schools. So I, I get it, but I need the parents to also, and community members at large, to just see that this is a conversation they should be aware of. I mean, I was floored when I found out that 30% of our students come in the first grade when grade level behind. Who knew that? And so I just, I'm glad that we're continuing to have these hard conversations around data. I get it that not everyone has done research or disaggregated data themselves, but this is still a learning opportunity for everyone. So thank you all for the discussion. Thank you, Dr. Battle and your team for presenting this and doing all your work to make it manageable for us to review. With that, I believe all of our governance issues are complete. We will move on to announcements. We'll start, we'll switch things up now and start down here with Ms. Tyler.
I have no announcements except to enjoy summer.
Wonderful. All right, Ms. Masters.
I would just like to announce the definition of segregation. The act or policy of separating people of different races, religions or sexes and treating them in a different way. That's from the Oxford American Dictionary, which is widely considered the most reliable of dictionaries. Many people refer to Merriam-Webster, which refers to it as the separation or isolation of a race, class or ethnic group by enforced or voluntary residence in a restricted area, by barriers to social intercourse, by separate educational facilities or by other discriminatory means. Just wanted to be sure we all understand where that word does and does not apply. And that's the only announcement I have tonight.
You know what, thank, just thank you, Mrs. Masters, because it was rough to sit here and not say anything back. All right, Mrs. Claire Peters.
Yeah, I'm not trying to let my fifth education pop up. But anyway, I'm going to my role as budget and finance chair. I would like to thank Chairwoman Quante Toomes. She just released her substitute budget. And we are greatly thankful in her substitute budget that she has, has proposed an allocation of $3,145,900 in additional funds to metro schools to pay for seven unpaid professional days for parapros, for advocacy centers for the remaining elementary schools and to reduce the student psychologist ratio. I would like to thank Councilwoman Porterfield and Councilwoman Sora for being very strong advocates for those priorities. And then also, of course, the perennial advocate, CM Cash, for always being an advocate of metro schools. I think this is really important to recognize the way we have transformed and more importantly, Dr. Battle, has transformed of way we do budgeting in the process along with Mr. Henson's leadership of the practical implementation of it, of where we transform, of really being more transparent, particularly about the aspirational budget. When we as a board articulate our priorities, which is guided with the leadership of Dr. Battle, and then articulate those priorities and then be very transparent to the council, to the mayor, but more importantly, the community, would it cost to truly educate our children to the fullest extent? And giving the community a voice and a pathway and information to advocate for what they want and need as part of that democracy and part of that community conversation that it's not always linear. But when the community speaks, when council listens, when we do our job, there is a pathway forward of continuing to educate and give more resources to the schools. So I just really want to recognize this very moment of, this has been a transformative historic year because of the resourcing of metro schools. I mean, it was interesting to have a conversation with council members about, of being in this new space because we're always used to cutting. And we're also used to doing reductions. And the fact that we weren't doing reductions, but then also having conversations about, could you do this? And like, no, because we've been cutting and cutting, cutting and cutting. Like I said before, we can't cut anymore. And then to understand that and realize that, have those thoughtful, long thought conversations with council members. I know Vice Chair Elrod really had, had engaged in two-way conversations with Councilman Druffel and having an education committee that, that work paid off. And to thank you for being advocacy chair and being... And to thank you for being advocacy chair and being the constantly squeaky wheel and to doing that and leading us in that. I think this is the product, all that hard work, when we work on one accord. And when we speak on one accord, this is the result that happens. And to really have the foundation start by Mayor Cooper, of putting a historic investment into teacher's school, into teacher salaries, and then to have this added on top of it really is transformative and really historic. So I really just want to take a moment as we move forward to really thank the community, thank Dr. Battle, thank her staff for really doing the hard work in the front end that made it easier in the back end. And so as long as we continue to have these conversations, continue to do it for future fiscal years, this is just the beginning, not the end. It makes everything. So I just want to thank you. So on that note, at the next school board meeting, be prepared to have some type of adjustment to our current fiscal year budgets, just to settle up accounts and just typical accounting measures, that we have to just reconcile everything and make sure that budget reflects what we did this year. And then also for the future budget, that there will probably most likely be an amendment to the budget that we pass for the fiscal year. So we'll be making adjustments to the current fiscal year budget and then make an adjustment to the future fiscal year budget. So just putting you on notice for that. You'll get more information as we go, but just to the public audience. So thank you to the community for contacting your council members and continue to advocate. And thank you to the board as whole, as it's the first time. I had to make some tough decisions, have sleepless nights over that reduction. I know, Dr. Battle, you're probably more relieved than I am, but I just want to thank everyone for that.
Thank you. All right, Mrs. Elrod.
Thank you. Yes, first, I would like to just say some appreciation to the council for their ongoing encouraging conversations that we've had about the budget. That also goes to my colleagues. I really appreciate y'all's support, whether it's coming to the council meetings or just having dialogue or being open and available to dialogue about what those conversations should be and how we're going to go forward and kind of being available to strategy. We are in a unique position this year, one that I hope continues. And I am exceptionally proud of us for getting there, and I appreciate Dr. Battle's leadership in helping us secure that. Lastly, in response to public comments, I would be remiss if I did not make sure that we say that wearing a mask is not a civil rights issue nor a civil rights battle, and equating masks to the deeply harmful, unjust, immoral practice, segregation. And even so, the incredible harmful comment that was made of equating it to the back of the bus is deeply, deeply offensive and unacceptable. And for that reason, it is not a reflection of MMPS. Thank you.
Well, thank you, ma'am. This is, Mr. Little?
Yep, yep. Kudos to you, Rachel. I think people have the right to do what they want to do as we think about masks. But something that I wanted to address that was in a local news article, I'll be addressing it after we finish tonight. Thank you guys for having patience with me, but I wanted to bring the documentation.
Okay. Mrs. Bush?
No, no announcements.
Mrs. Poopa Walker?
I want to just say that we have selected two student school board members, and they are awesome. But we had, you know, over two dozen apply. We had 12 finalists. We interviewed, we had an amazing committee of volunteers interview. It was really hard. We have two rock stars, and so we were hoping to have them, introduce them to the board at the next board meeting, but our senior is going to the governor's school, and so she won't be able to be here. So what we'll do is instead, so by the time she comes back, it'll be August 10th meeting, and so we'll introduce them there and their families, which is the first day of school, which is nice. But we will have a press release come out next week and have them available for media next week. And so I will hold the reveal until then, and they are amazing. And so just really, it was, we are in good hands as a city. We have such amazing students in this district. So then the other thing I wanted to do was, our last board meeting was, we were forced to adjourn because of a disruptive crowd in the audience. And so I wanted to say a few things that I didn't get to say then, which is, number one, that was the end of school, this last meeting. And so I wanted to just say that this has been such a ride, and some of us were here from the beginning of that ride. Some of us came on and joined us midway through that ride. But this group of people here, we really, I think, weathered this as best we could. I remember sitting in this room with Anna Shepherd chairing a meeting to approve Dr. Battle, like seconds before we shut down this district. And so Dr. Battle has been such a source of inspiration and steady leadership, and I wanted to thank you for always being a good listener and partner and leader. And I think for me, I'll speak for myself, I felt like you were the right person at the right time for this city. And so I'm positive next year's going to be a better year, but boy, have we been battle-tested, and some of you have really come out and supported me when I've had potentially the most difficult district in terms of folks who were feeling a kind of way and trying to, you know, do what I thought was best. And so I appreciated the support. And anyway, so thanks to everybody for just being great colleagues.
We did it, Joe. All right, Dr. Gentry.
Yeah, so all of that. Thank you, Rachel. And it was actually on my mind to make a response to that, but I appreciate you. And I'll just simply say, you know, I don't know that I speak for all people of color, but it is offensive when we become allies unused, and our story and our journey gets used to justify some of the most outlandish things and try to make alignment between an experience that most of the time the people who are trying to use it have no point of reference, no point of reference for it, no point of reference for it when it happened, and no point of reference for the continuing residual effects of it that each person of color, I don't care how much money you make, I don't care where you live, you're still experiencing, we are still experiencing the impacts of that. So thank you, Ms. Elrod, for that. And to Ms. Poopa Walker's comment, since our meeting was so disrupted in the way that it was last week, I do want to just highlight that two of the STEM schools were in District One, are in District One. And so two amazing principals at Crestwell and Alex, I got it right, yeah, Alex Green, I always, I'm going to do my directions, and Alex Green, who have stayed the course for a long, long time with those students and have never, never, ever, to my knowledge, talked about wanting to be moved, wanting to be placed someplace differently. They have a passion for those students that is just palpable, and you can feel it when you talk to them, when you walk into their buildings. And so I appreciate them being there. I appreciate them taking the time because it is a painful application process to gather all of that information. And so I appreciate their efforts in that space. And I also want to send a thank you to our maintenance department, who paid a visit to Churchwell today to reroute some air conditioning ducts. We had some very hot and uncomfortable kids, and with one phone call, they were there. And I definitely appreciate that. They received a round of cheers and applause from the students when they walked into the classroom. Their picture was taken, and they have been posted on social media. With a big thank you to those three gentlemen who came to the rescue. I think that the students are poised for a very amazing experience this summer. The smaller, and again, I think that is going to be interesting to see the smaller teacher ratio, teacher-student ratio that we'll experience this summer and the impact that it can have in getting us closer to that every student-known space that we're looking to find ourselves in. So thanks to everyone who stood up and showed out this school year and throughout this summer, and we're all ready for the rest of this ride, Dr. Battle.
Thank you, Dr. Gentry. I will say that I'm first accepting requests for agenda items for our next board retreat. I've already had a couple, so we're looking at June, I'm sorry, probably late July. But with that in mind, July 22nd is a Thursday, that is when the State Board of Education will be meeting. I've already talked with the executive director. We're trying to work it out. If you all are open to it, I do want to broach the idea of hosting them for lunch, having them maybe here at Bransford Avenue or even in the Wellness Center, just build a relationship, shake hands, exchange, you know, contact information, and just see what we can do about building better relationships, and then begin to branch out and start our letter writing campaign. So just let me know what your thoughts are on that, Dr. Sevier, Mrs. Robert, I'll speak with you both just to make sure we've crossed all Ts and dotted Is and that this is appropriate. I can't, I'm going to always say it at every meeting until I walk Christopher into those doors, I can't wait for him to be a pearl cone cluster student at Jones. But with that being said, next week, we'll be having a conversation around the usage of Buena Vista. So parents in the pearl cone cluster, please be looking for information on that. Please join the Teams meeting. If you have questions, please prepare them. Mr. Walker, I am going to reach out to you. I have literally been begging to join parent organizations because I need to see how can I really rally behind 37208 and that pearl cone cluster. And I know we don't have PAC representatives. And so any parents watching, if you're in the downtown area, whether you're gentrified or not, please join us, because I really, really, really want other parents, whether they are, have typically been empowered or, you know, been at the table or not, I want them at the table with me because we are about to lockland the pearl cone cluster. I can't wait to really support it in a nice white parents kind of way. But with that, be there, no further business.
Hold on, I just want to give the date for that meeting.
Thank you.
The Buena Vista Community Meeting. I didn't think, I couldn't get connected earlier, so it is going to be on, oh, come on, Camille, oh, there it is, Thursday, June 17th at 6:00 PM. It is going to be a Teams meeting, and I think you can go to the homepage, if you scroll to the bottom of the homepage, the link at mnps.org. If you go to the bottom of that homepage, you'll see the link to that meeting, Thursday, June 17th at 6:00 PM, to talk about how we will use Buena Vista Elementary School.
And with that, oh, and I'm sorry, last thing, Mrs. Peter Peters, I would like to speak with you about the board retreat if we need some more time to discuss the budget. But be there, no further business. This meeting is adjourned.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again or for more information about this and other programs, visit nashville.goo.